Call the Graham County Board of Education Regular Meeting, February 6, 2024 to order. And Mr. Moody, would you open us with prayer?
Yes, sir. Hey, we're going to stay again. Thank you for another day, Lord. Thank you for your grace, Lord, that your son Jesus Christ came and died for our sins, Lord. I can't thank you enough for that, Lord. We know, Lord, we're living in a little trying times, Lord, whether it's overseas with Israel or with our borders, or just the chaos everywhere, Lord. Just have to keep focused on you now that you're in control. Things happen. Always keep focused on you. Praise your behalf of our school system, Lord, the school board in particular day, Lord, that they'll make wise decisions based on the your every central board and our administration, Lord, our teachers, and any of our kids, whatever we're going through, Lord, you know, that's praise your blessing and be there. Again, thank you for all you've done for us. And this is our prayer. Amen.
Okay, pledge allegiance to our. Y'all are gonna lead us today. We got Robbinsville Middle School here. So y'all go ahead.
I believe in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, before we release you all, y'all may sit down. I'd like to know, and I won't remember most of your names, probably won't remember any of them, but the ones I know. But I'd like for you to tell me your name, your main interest, what your favorite subject is, or anything you want to tell us. Okay, start right here with this young lady. You're not bashful, are you? Just a little bit.
Hey, Grace, what do you want to do when you get out of school?
I don't know. I just want to make money.
I love it. Eighth grade, yeah. I didn't take that. Go ahead.
My name is Emily. Basketball and then in eighth grade. Um, my name is Zach. Oh, my gosh, sorry. My bad. Um, I'm in seventh grade.
Did you say chico lately?
Yeah.
Talked several of those. Go ahead.
Uh, my name is Alyssa Vaughn. Uh, I like to wrestle. I play softball. Uh, I'm in eighth grade and I want to be a nurse something else.
What position you playing softball?
Uh, right field.
All right.
My name is Alyssa Vaughn and I'm in seventh grade and I play softball in Brown Area School. I'm an endocrinologist for the.
Very good.
Um, my name is Leslie Bart. Um, I'm just in softball and volleyball.
Young man on the front row here.
My name is Tucker Smith. I'm in sixth grade and I like math.
You like math?
My name is Trevor Bartfield and I play football and basketball and I'm in seventh grade.
Okay, were you on the middle school team this year? Good. Under the theme. All right, the two basketball players, you've got to be a watch, aren't you? Go ahead.
My name is Samuel. I like, well, I play baseball, basketball, and I'm in eighth grade.
Okay.
Uh, my name is Dan Nels. I'm in eighth grade. I like to play basketball.
What was your last name?
Nels.
Nels, okay.
I'm Jaylee Williams. I love softball. I'm in seventh grade and I want to go to the.
Okay.
I'm Gregory Gibson and I'm in seventh grade and just like.
Is that all of them?
So.
Okay, also in seventh grade.
Seventh grade.
Mr. Nelson, um, Samuel forgot to tell you that you broke a school or set a school record this year across countries.
Who's talking? I can't even see. Oh, Sonny, okay. Now, which one broke the school record?
Samuel.
Yeah, I saw that in the paper. Okay, all right. Have y'all got anything else to say to us? All right, I'm gonna let them go, or unless you want them to stay?
I think they're gonna get to go get breakfast, so I think.
Oh, yeah, bring me back some, okay?
Thank you all.
All right, thank you for being here and thank you for what you're doing for our school system.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Yeah, it is a little loud. Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda for today.
Uh, Nelson, um, I would like to, Chairman Nelson, I would like to make a request to amend the agenda for a request for salary information for nursing staff and school resource officers. Uh, we got some stuff in our packet.
Right.
Uh, I could not decide for it. And, uh, this is something that I was asked to put on the agenda, and it looks like we've run discussed it in open session, but it's really not something that we can discuss in open session because it deals with personnel and salaries.
Sure.
Uh, there is something on here. They will throw it to next meeting. There is something on here that I probably can't discuss in open session. So can we move, um, can we just move K?
Delete it today?
Today and move it to the March meeting.
Do I have a motion to delete, uh, discussion items K today? Do I have a motion to delete that one for today?
You do.
Do I have a say? So, do I? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, now, do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Absolutely. We approve the amended agenda.
Do I have a say?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? Now, do I have a motion to approve the January 16th minutes?
I still want them.
Do I have a say?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, sure, Ms. Klein, do we have anybody signed up for public comment period?
Yes. You did.
Okay. Mr. Ramsey?
I just want to thank all the board members for their service, a thankless job, specifically the Chairman Nelson and Vice Chairman Carriage for your leadership. I know it's, uh, it's a tough job being out front. You have our support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramsey. Okay, do I have a motion to close public comment period? So, do I have a say?
My second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, I've just written these names down randomly. Tanya, would you, this is reports and discussion items. Would you be first, Tanya?
Happy to. So, as you can tell, things are a bit problematic at the middle school. Uh, we have just completed our mid-year already, which, uh, sets the kids in reading and math. We are seeing a significant gains. Uh, kids are not exactly doing what they're about to do, but we are starting to see some progress. Uh, we have been working with, uh, Miss Cable. Um, we have a school literacy advisory team made up of English teachers and some of the other, uh, critical base teachers, where we are trying to make sure that we are getting, uh, some vocabulary and reading in all of our content areas. Uh, so we are trying to move in that direction and make some, some good progress also. Uh, we will do our check-ins next week, uh, so we'll have a little bit more information about where the kids are with our standards. Uh, and we, uh, have our global leader program at the going. Uh, the kids are enjoying that and we are doing, uh, lots of initiatives. Uh, Shannon Knott and Cody Burden are doing a fantastic job leading that. Um, and we have several school projects and things that kids are involved in. So, uh, that's going great. Uh, we have spent the last week, our teachers have worked really hard on short notice updating our webpage, uh, and all of their, uh, information for their curriculum and all the materials that they're using. It is a work in progress. I think we, uh, that we are making significant progress. Uh, thanks to Eric Sawyer. She did a lot of the work up front and we just copied and pasted. Uh, but, uh, it, we're getting there. I think it, it looks good. And so, uh, that's pretty much what's happening.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hoo?
Yes, um, I don't know if you saw on our social media page or the Grove Star did an online article, um, Robbinsville High School had three teachers that were, um, recognized by the state for their 2023 student growth. Not only were they a course top in our district among fourth grade math teachers, uh, it was Keela Stewart and Teresa Munch for fourth grade math, Brandy Carpenter for third grade reading. They were in the top 25% of teachers in the state with student growth, with how much they grew their students in their subject areas. And so I thought that was a huge accomplishment. Just wanted to give a shout out to them here today. So, we have finished up our middle of the year in-class, uh, assessments for our K3 and literacy. And we went with a regional literacy consultant to go over our protocols where we set end-of-year goals based on our numbers. Um, we have some areas in our data that look really well, but other areas that we know we have to work on between now and the end of the year. The good news is we know that now. And we're gonna continue to work really hard to try to make sure that we reach those all grade level goals by the end of the year. We are starting our check-ins, uh, with our fourth and fifth grade, our second check-in. Um, and we'll be giving in that information with teachers as we get it too. So just moving on with those assessments. We have a rock and grading at the elementary school heading out this, uh, month, but we have February 26th is when all of our classrooms have a schedule together and enjoy, uh, rock and grading. And we have that parent night on Thursday, February 29th. So, just giving in from all the information that we got from those middle of the year assessments and preparing and trying to get as far as we can get everybody.
Before we go, David, before I call on you, uh, Ms. Walsh, you weren't here last meeting. And David, I don't think you were either, were you? Or weren't you? But anyway, uh, Ms. Knight, uh, showed three certificates for all three schools, the middle, the high, and the elementary. Uh, and I'd like for y'all to say a little bit about that accomplishment, about reaching a goal.
So it was, uh, the, it was in recognition of growth that each of your schools made, yes.
Like at the elementary school, for example, on our school report card, in 2022, we had an overall performance grade falling into 41, which made us a D school. We did not make growth. Of course, COVID punched us hard in the face, but it did everybody else. And it's just where we're working. We have to move forward. From 2023, from 2022 to 2023, Robbinsville Elementary School went from a 41 performance grade to a 50 performance grade. Still a D, but that's nine points of performance grade growth. And when that grow based on state projections for student growth. So that was the, that was the number difference in the performance grade on the report card for the elementary school.
Okay, good. Tony, do you want to say?
The middle school goes, I'm not getting any percentages because I don't, I'm not as good as Jamie. And that's the difference. Uh, but our students, uh, we did see growth last year. Um, and that is something that our teachers have set a goal with, and we use what's called EBO Stand. Uh, we share that with the students where they were and where the state projects them to be at the end of the year and kind of help them try to learn to set some goals. And teachers would come up with them periodically during the school year. Uh, and you know, the way we look at it is we just, our kids are such a gap right now is that we just have to stay on that trajectory and, you know, keep making growth and hopefully see growth. And then hopefully at some point, we're gonna be proficient. So that's kind of at higher level of middle school.
All right, Mr. Matheson, you're on now. You can elaborate on.
So at the high school, uh, in March, I'll be the principal, 14 years of Robbins High School. Thirteen of those 14 years, our school has made growth. So that's something I'm very proud of. It's not something that I've done, but it, it goes to the hard work of our, of our teachers. Uh, however, I will say there's always room for improvement. We were a C school again this past year, and that's not enough. I mean, we need to be working to move up via B school. And our proficiency scores definitely need to improve all the way around, uh, back in push and science. We need to do a better job as far as our kids being proficient and on college revenue, uh, you know, on graduation.
Do you have anything to share with us, uh, just to report?
I did some, yeah, a lot of stuff. All right, so, uh, this month, as part of our growth and proficiency, we'll be giving the ACT to all the juniors on February the 27th. And, um, tomorrow morning, we actually have our first ACT practice exercise, all the juniors being auditorial first thing of the week. And they're gonna be going over just some testing and strategies and things like that. We'll be having things all month long, uh, surrounding the ACT, trying to get these kids prepared for that test on February 27th. Uh, as far as our senior class goes, uh, we haven't really been able to, no more scholarships have been awarded yet. And so, and another issue that we're facing is that FASFA did not open really until December the 31st. So colleges are not even awarding the kids what they're gonna get at the college as far as financial aid until probably mid-April sometime. So those things are running way behind as to where we normally are. Uh, our teachers, uh, next Monday, February the 12th, our social studies, science, and English teachers will be taking part in the second in-person reading apprenticeship training. It's a program that we started in August. We had some of the facilitator come in, spend two days with our teachers, they did online, uh, Zoom meetings since then, but they're not letting me back. And that's the second in-person training. And that's going real well. And you can see a difference in the classes and how teachers are organizing their lessons, uh, how students are involved in the class and self-learning and different things like that. Uh, this is CTE month, February is. So CTE department is planning some different things, uh, throughout the month to celebrate that. But one of the first things that we did is our HOSE Club, which is the most active club in our school. They did a penny wars between first period classrooms, and they raised $2,211, uh, for the Cancer Foundation. So that, they did a really good job with the athletic department, made a big donation to that cause. So very happy with athletic department supporting that. This month, we have our second, uh, business advisory board meeting, uh, for CTE. That's on February 27th also at six o'clock. And we've started working on the CLNA and local plan. I've been to two workshops, uh, regarding the CLNA. It's due to our regional CTE director on March the 15th. So myself, uh, Ms. Wiggins and Ms. Sawyer are spending every Wednesday morning working toward our goals for the next couple of years, uh, in CTE. In athletics, this weekend, we're gonna be hosting the regional wrestling tournament. It's individual tournament. Wrestling starts Friday afternoon, five o'clock, and then we'll have wrestling all day Saturday. It starts at eight thirty Saturday morning. And we have 26 teams that will be coming to compete in the Western Regional Tournament. So it's gonna be a busy time at the high school. In basketball, uh, our boys are currently tied for first with Smoky Mountain Conference. Uh, we've got three conference games left. Uh, tonight, we play at, uh, Athe School, Friday night at Swain, and next Tuesday at Cherokee. But we also have senior night at home this week on Wednesday night against Blue Ridge. Uh, in indoor track, we have four students that qualify for the indoor state championships, and that is this Saturday evening, Winston Salem. So they'll be, uh, traveling down there. We'll get the kids setting conference records and, uh, personal bets all the way out of season. So that's really good. And then next week, we start over again. We've got baseball, softball, men's golf, and outdoors track will be starting between now and February the 9th. It's a busy time at the high school. And then I do have a couple of field trips that I need to get.
One more thing. Yes, Wednesday, the announcement.
Yeah.
Mentioned, cut.
Okay, so, uh, tomorrow morning at 11:30, there will be, uh, Keller Adams will be announcing where he will be attending college to play football. That'll be taking place in our auditorium, and that's open to any students that want to go in there. It is during our lunchtime. And, you know, we'll, we're gonna have it set up where people can come and go straight into the auditorium. But I know it's gonna be covered by the All-Ins and, um, WCPT Radio and, uh, the, uh, what is the local sport, FYN. They're gonna be there. So several sports networks, music networks are gonna be there covering this. We're obviously. Uh, we're gonna be excited to see, uh, where we're going to play the ball. So he, I said, he's been a fantastic young man to have at high school. He's a great leader among his peers. And he does things, I think, for the route. He works on a test hill wherever he goes. He'll make a difference for somebody. So we're excited to hear where that's gonna be.
Yeah.
Women's golf was in the fall.
Oh, it's in the fall?
Yes, we already had women's golf. Yeah. So men's golf was in the spring. Yes.
Sonny.
Good morning. Um, we continue to see an increase, um, in kids who need interventions for mental health or have been working on asking. Um, with that said, uh, Mr. Matheson has graciously agreed to let some of his teachers on the 27th, the teachers that are not, um, working with the students that have to take an ACT test, they will be doing first aid mental health training. So I don't know how many that's gonna be yet, but it's, it's gonna be a blessing.
Thank you. Latish?
Um, I'm gonna ask, um, if Kevin would mind, uh, would mind if we can pass those outside. I don't have to stand in front of the camera. This is the data that I try to provide to you on a regular basis for counselors and social educators nurses. And so that is during the month of January. And then the only announcement that I had to make is that, um, this week is National School Counseling Week. And we are very, very fortunate to have three amazingly trained professionals. And only three school leaders, Sam Breva, this is middle school, you have Neil Walsh, and at the high school, we have Shady Daniels. Um, and so if you all see those individuals this week, they take a moment to recognize them and their, uh, work, their efforts and professionalism and their great arsenal system. And that's all I have today.
Thank you. Kevin, you got anything for us besides, uh, the facilities?
I will give you the facilities a little later.
Okay.
But the other thing I was just gonna mention real quick was about testing. Uh, these guys pretty much mentioned it already, but, uh, as far as testing goes currently, right now, we're in a second round of check-ins. Uh, I know at the elementary school, as of about nine fifty-five, still have two students, uh, testing, I think, in third grade reading. And so currently, we're being all those check-ins at this time to kind of get the teachers a snapshot where the students are currently to see, you know, where, uh, uh, more supports might be needed. And, uh, then we also, uh, as Mr. Matheson mentioned, uh, we do have an ACT coming up on the 27th. Along with that, we have, uh, alternate exams, uh, the XTM one in grade eleven will also be during that time period. Uh, and currently right now, uh, we're in the window for the Access for Angels test, which is basically a, a test, a yearly exam that we give to, uh, our students that speak us a, uh, another language at home on a consistent basis, uh, just to see how their progress is going. So that's, we're in the window for the Access for Angels right now. So, uh, they're still, they don't know we're going at the end of the semester, end of the year, still a lot of testing going on. But that's, that's all really, really after testing. Uh, I will say this, I'm no meteorologist, but I can guarantee you that it will snow not before the 27th, because that always happens. When ACT time, ACT time comes around, uh, we're always worried about those delays because you have to get started at a certain time and all that stuff. So, uh, so fingers crossed that that will happen for us this year, but it seems to happen every year. So.
It's all part of the ground.
Let me say this too, with the ACT, because of the number of teachers that it takes for us to administer that test, it will be a remote instruction day for the other students. So they will be at home and we'll only have juniors come in that day at the high school. It just takes too much of the staff to give. It's all the way down the hall, so.
Okay, Mr. Matheson, you said field trips. You had a field trip.
I do. Uh, the first one is for the HOSA State Competition. And, uh, that is April the 3rd through the 6th. And Andrea Adams is the HOSA sponsor. We take these kids to compete at the state competition. They'll be staying in Greensboro after the shared four seasons. And, uh, there's usually, it's about 20 kids, I think, that are going on this trip. And, uh, we're still currently looking for a bus driver for that trip. Just saying. So. You want to get?
He drives a bus.
I know he does. Don't you do? But so that's the first trip that needs approval. The second one is our junior trip. And we have 24 total students going on that trip. It's March the 27th through the 31st to Washington DC and New York City. And they'll be flying out of Knoxville and then, uh, flying out of New York back to Knoxville on the 31st. And chaperones for that trip are Ben Davis and Angela Tyler.
Yeah.
I mean, you can go.
Twenty-four.
These juniors?
Ju, well, it's juniors and seniors. It's a, it's a mixture, actually. And there's gonna be some soft. We changed the trip. We're now, as long as you're 16 years old, uh, you can go. We're rotating each year. So this year it's Washington, New York. Next year, it looks like we're gonna go to Puerto Rico. So, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the trip April 3rd through the 6th for the state competition, uh, with Andrea Adams' chaperone. Do I have a, in Greensburg, is that correct?
So.
Do I have a say?
My second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, the junior trip, 24 students, March 27th through the 31st to DC and New York City. Do I have a motion to approve that trip? Do I have a say?
You have a say.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Moody, I'm sorry I skipped you a while ago. So go ahead.
Actually fine. I'll, I'll be part of my time in the section of the day when I talk about the bits.
And Ms. Walsh, you have a field trip?
Two field trips. Uh, the first one, uh, my staff jumped it down a little bit, and, uh, we do, uh, PBIS for our discipline, where our kids start with 100 points each month, and they lose points depending on, you know, if they get in trouble. So, uh, we have about 172 kids, I think, that qualified for our reward trip. It is scheduled for tomorrow, uh, but we forgot to get permission ahead of time. And they are going to the Lost Sea. We have four buses reserved, and, and we have 10 chaperones. Uh, so that is the first field trip. The second, and I think, I'm not sure if you have approved that before, but this is for our eighth grade coast trip. Uh, we will be going April 1st through the 5th. Uh, right now, we have, including chaperones and students, we have 74 kids going. So that would require us to have two buses. We also got an email this morning from the Cherokee Boys Club that, uh, they cannot provide our buses. So they just told us that this morning. So we are having to check with other companies, uh, to make sure that we can secure us. Uh, we will be going to, uh, the coast, and then we will be coming back to Charlotte, uh, and then come off and do, I think we will do a couple of college visits also.
All right, do I have a, excuse me, do I have a motion to approve the field trip to the Lost Sea in Sweetwater, Tennessee for 172 students?
So.
Do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? And do I have a motion to approve the coast trip April 1st through the 5th for 74 students? Do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? Any more field trips? Okay, thank you. All right, surveys, principals and directors.
Um, I'll, I'll do that. So there was, y'all asked to look at surveys. There was one survey in senior, uh, we emailed it to you, and it's in your packet and printed version. It is from SISMA. Um, the way that Crystal Vought explained it to me when I asked her, um, this correlates with their standard course of study. It gives the teachers an opportunity to teach, I believe, if in this year, three lesson. And Ms. Walsh, you may jump in if this is middle school. So you may, if you want to add to this, please do. But it gives the teachers an opportunity to have curriculum, additional curriculum to teach, like world problems, to go with their global leadership initiative that's going on. Um, and then it would give them the curriculum next year to do six units of world problems. It's really implementation of the math curriculum that they have. Been able to use that in the daily, in the daily life, you know, figuring out if it's a, you know, a water shortage or that kind of thing, just implementing. figuring out if it's a, you know, a water shortage or that kind of thing, just implementing the curriculum in a hands-on way. Um, and then in the next year, then they would get the uh, they would be given all the curriculum free teachers for three more years. Is that correct, Ms. Walsh?
And I'm not sure if she could sample them there, but it's really good because it takes the skills that they're learning in mathematics and makes it applicable to real world uh situations. So it it was really good stuff.
What they have is a copy of the students' survey that the students will see.
Okay. What did this generate from? Where did this generate from? Do you, does anybody know?
I think Ms. Walsh connected.
It was, I can't remember the name of the company, but there's a company that puts out curriculum materials.
And this will be required that our students take?
Well, no, the teacher, uh, the survey, yes, in order for us to be able to participate and get the free curric- access to the free curriculum that students want.
Is it paper, pencil, or is it on?
It will be, I think it'll probably be online.
Okay.
Usually everything now is pretty much online.
They apparently give the student number. Your teacher will provide you with a student number. So that doesn't have it. I really have a problem with students having to put their name on service.
Yes, it will, they will identify.
And to be perfectly honest with you, on page two, board. I think it's a good survey. Basically, I did go over this, but I don't care for the questions in the second part of that. There's A, B, C, D, E.
Where are you at?
Second page, the second question.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, I don't really see how that that correlates. And as a student, as a, I wouldn't have a hard time as an adult answering this, but um uh, how carefully you list to other people's points of view. Uh, I really have a problem with number two. How well do you get along with students who are different from you? That's, I think, I think this whole section is arbitrary, to be perfectly honest with you. I know we can't take it out. I'm just voicing my opinion. Um, we teach our children what they're needing in their 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 own person. So I really don't know what they mean, how well you get along with students who are different from you. I mean, I'm different from Mr. Nelson. He's a male, female. I think that's just very arbitrary.
As that relates to our local leader program, it is looking at diversity, and and that we are recognizing our native American students.
That we're recognized as Hispanics.
Native Americans.
Hispanics. And that's why I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. It's so, so, you know, different. There's, whether it's race, whether it's gender, whether it's, you know, I don't really know whether it, they're younger, whether it's older. So.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately, a lot of these surveys, uh, because they're given to schools all across the nation, a lot of the questions don't pertain to us in Grand County. We don't have those issues.
But, you know, it's a nationally large and sure survey, so.
I don't know where that's going also. But anyhow, um, it, and I don't know with this survey, if they skip a question, because I do know on some surveys, if they skip a question, they then go on to the next page. Which is, I've been trying, which I was just a question, but that that's all that's one.
I have a question. We're voting on these?
No.
We're just approving them or not?
No, this fits our survey guideline. This fits our survey guideline, our policy guideline. It does fit it, but I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, I'm not.
I think it's a little bit arbitrary, but I've said it, so go on, do the one thing.
And my opinion is I'm a for.
Well, but it, but it does fit our policy.
Okay. Is that all the survey we have?
That is.
Okay. All right, uh, intercom, been approved. Mr. Moody.
As you know, we come to safe schools and keep the kids and staff safe. We primarily have to use local funds to do all, everything ongoing things. If the state does provide us an opportunity to go apply for a grant each fall uh to help out. Uh, the same schools names, in other words, we couldn't be looking for schools. We had a lot of big ticket items, just things that need to be replaced at schools and looked at. It's just our schools getting aged, so, you know, that means things back to almost the forties, and high schools walking now, thirty, blink them off, thirty-one years off. So we shocked with the moon and Latisha Williams and Miss Lott helped me with the grant. We asked for half a million dollars. And surprisingly, they gave us three hundred, which is, uh, if I'm on the state, it was more than I said the state, so.
Because last year, the same event, we got twenty.
Yeah, twenty, almost already thirty thousand.
Yeah.
So. Only got around thirty thousand last year.
And we got this year.
Three hundred thousand.
Yeah, nice. I saw that.
So uh the uh, the big ticket items was our intercom system and our uh exterior door locks, which I'm gonna go through the list of what we're gonna do with the money, so that's complete transparency. So with the three hundred thousand, one thing we're gonna do is, we're going to replace the uh emergency manuals in all the classrooms and emergency kids into easy-to-read guideline flip charts. It's gonna have everything in there that they need in case there's a physical emergency or a mental health emergency. A teacher can, because if something's going on, you know, some people are frantic, they can panic a little bit, they can pick it up, easy read, color code, and go straight to the way for emergency, they're fast. So uh that'll be several thousand dollars for that. We're gonna put repeater, additional radios. At the high school, they're still on analog system. Our elementary and our buses are on digital, and it works pretty well. It is hard to communicate sometimes in that building due to lock walls. So we want to put them on a digital system with their ratings and get them extra parts where they repeat. Um, another big item is, is our interior and exterior door locks. Uh, we didn't have the money to replace the exterior door locks. They're still in good shape. They just, we were trying to patch that the best we can for our announcement, reduce maintenance for that. But the next thing we're doing is, we're going to rekey every door within the school system, which is, there's almost five hundred. Well, there's, we've probably, I've probably got a hundred keys, don't know what they're going to. Uh, you're dealing with emergency, you've got the keys, trying to figure out what means where. We're gonna reduce every door lock to, in the system to five thousand. And then keep a strict uh watch on who has access to those keys. High schools have interior door locks, keys, probably over thirty years, copies. Some master keys, not just regular keys. There will be no more master keys. There'll be office keys or a school, uh, teacher keys, floor keys up here. So we are gonna do that uh as well. We're gonna, we need to fix our uh high school firearm system. Uh, there's huge works in it. Uh, uh, with getting out to uh all the classrooms, uh, one we have where David actually has a door to door, but let people know we have a firearm going on. So we should fix that as well. Um, we're gonna replace the rest of our windows that have the old lifespan of thirty years. We're taking them down and replacing the tent. It's cheaper, it's cleaner, it's better for air quality. Uh, the mirror tent, nobody can see, they can see out, we can get some sunlight to these kids. So that's a safety issue as well. So we're gonna finish that. Now, the big ticket item is uh the uh, is the PA system. Uh, both campuses, PA systems are horrible. Yeah, okay. I'm giving the new one. Uh, elementary has a standalone system that has dead spots, and as you know, it's a campus that's spread out. Until we uh get into a singular building campus, it's it's just a nightmare to try to keep, keep watch and give communications out. High school is a IP-based, and it's uh at times in working, times it won't. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And we're sure there's some areas that we'll not get there. When we price these, to go back to the IP system, which is through our call system based on the network and internet base, basically, that's where we got part of the money of three hundred thousand dollars to fix, which we don't have the money for that, even for this track. But we come across with having the IT department, we found a radio-based PA system that uh has its own FCC license, but it'll push out for over tw- twenty or forty watts, I'm not sure. But it's it's, it's a standalone unit that's not dependent on electricity, and it's not dependent on internet. So if either one goes down, they still can make announcements, because they have battery buckets. We could put a speaker in every classroom, every hallway, everywhere outside of the school system. Okay, as long as it's with like a two, two thousand of the ratings. Right now, the farther it is, it's a thousand feet. So they'll be able to communicate not only in the building, but outside will be able to, in case there's an emergency, with which you all come with panic alarms and this, that, and the other cases of alarm. So this, when we do our own work, this turns out to be almost half as what is the IP system is. It's a standalone system, will not type the phone lines, uh, which can be a problem at times as well, but it's a very good system. And uh, like I said, uh, all we're gonna do as far as our work is and our maintenance for next few months will just be if you approve this order, because it's over thirty thousand dollars, all they can do is stick it into a power source, whether it's plug it in or tie it into one of the outlets or something to get it to see them. That's all there is to it. They'll come in, they'll see it, uh, they'll teach them how to use it. It also comes with a bail schedule. Where bail schedule is another problem. So it'll fix that problem as well, and we're hoping somehow we can tie in the firearm system to them, but that's future down, down the road. But um, I say that, say all this, since it's over thirty thousand dollars, since it's due for passing, I got three bids, then two IP ones, or once the revenue three hundred thousand, that was three hundred and ten thousand, the radio based, which is a better system. It is, as you can see, is a hundred eighty-six thousand, once you cover, a hundred eighty-three thousand, once you buy the high school project and the elementary project. So any questions pertaining to that?
You said something about buses and the, you're right about that, the drive, the radio. You say that's gonna be a little bit better, the communication.
Well, the high school, the buses, the buses communication, it's it's the best it's gonna be. It's it's pretty clear, because we, we have a kid, uh, that bus, I almost broke down on the dragon, and you got radioed in. I can hear elementary and elementary. So that's what a digital repeater does. It makes it clear, it makes it expand. High school does not have that capability. One last time we had the drills there for lockdown drills, we had hard times getting on the radios from one end to the other. So they need their own computer, which switches from analog to digital, and that should solve that.
I guess that just goes to some buses have better radios.
Well, and and I say too, when they get, but they have to go back to an analog and digital just to talk to the bus. This will help, it will help, it will help, they're largely digitalized, once this happens for communication, because communication, communication is key in any type of scenario, whether it's an emergency, whether it's a bus or incident school, whatever. So it, but probably will play up, but there's times you notice it, oh, I flit you sometimes, but overall, the bus radios, before we had the relay and used the county frequency, now we're completely standalone. And that, and that tower, that's actually on the, do you want us to not, or watch out the bottom, right, watch out the bottom wave. So uh, can't let us put it up there for five thousand dollars. So uh, so the disk repeater probably go to the top of the high school or the bus garage for that campus.
So you just add these two numbers together?
Yes, I got two separate quotes, in case I didn't have plenty, but maybe do both of them, but I'll do. Uh, so uh, the high school is a little more expensive, I believe, requires, and also it's massive in the industry.
One fifteen, the hospital?
Yes.
Is that the one fifteen, sixty-four?
Yes.
Sixty-seven.
Or sixty-two. So again, there's more.
So it's what it's playing, the lower, you know, than those preschools down there.
Everywhere.
Wow.
We're doing it, both, and the gyms have been bullhorns placed in there. You know, we're we're gonna, we've got forty, fifty bullhorns placed in spare places on the outside of your campus. Uh, when we're done with this, there's absolutely no dead spots.
In that area.
In the gap to you too. A little bit of bullhorns in there too. And here's the great thing about the system, with IP, we've got that, seven tires, that, the whole thing's for it. Here, if there's a problem, all we gotta do is take it down and replace it with another. Uh, the rest of it keeps going. So then, or if if we do have a dead spot, we'll be in maintenance, and I tell people, sit down and try to grab everything. If there is a place, we'll get it out, we'll have an extra. So if there's a problem anywhere, we, it's it's just so easily to fix.
And there's three keys there.
That's, that's a deal for three key, and it's under thirty thousand dollars, so I didn't have to give the, you know, you had to give your approval on it. It's actually turned out to be around twenty-nine thousand, about sixty dollars for one. Thirty key, and actually it's coming today, we're gonna walk the campus.
Well, okay, it, can Mr. Madison get in the high school, the elementary, and members?
Well, you're gonna have one key against all the teachers and custodial doors from the whole school system. High school offices will have their own key, there's two. Middle school offices will have their own key, that's three. Elementary will have their own keys, four. Since Walsh have their own keys, that's five. We will have six one for, for an entity's office, but that's because of personnel and stuff like that. So what Mr. Matheson will have, as a principal of the school, he'll have a key for his offices and a key for his rooms. But he, but he will not, nobody in his office will have a key to the other offices. The director will have all our keys in case of emergency.
We can't come and get in there.
No, no, no. So he can't come in and steal their trunks, so.
You worried about me this morning?
No, I'm trying to convince you. I've gone to some schools, I've been lost, and I've gone to some schools, and they've had an intercall on the outside. Not likely you got, not likely you had a high school where you had to bust somebody in. Well, I think they do bust somebody in, but it was pretty sophisticated on the outside of the building. And who you were and where you were going, and it was on the actual outside of the building, not through the first, those first doors like you all have. They don't have anything like that. It'll be interesting, but now they come in the main door. They're in the building before.
This there, no, they have a waiting area that they cannot get past, or they feel every time somebody eyes on them before they let them in the main building. Nobody comes in on any campus unless they're allowing it, or if teacher props open a door. So we should be seeing what happened in the texts. So there's nobody has any access to our school unless they've got a file on this, somebody in front of us, let's, I mean, the reason we have speaker system is because the front foyer is across the commons area from the house. Bill's still in elementary. People come in the door right there. So we, we fixed that place to box them in before they can do any fun with this, their, their big dusting.
I saw this was really neat, that it was totally on the outside of the building, no way you're in this.
Yeah.
I just.
Well, what I like about our waiting area too, it gets people out of the way. They didn't have a drive, a place, and wait, whatever, because really ninety-nine percent of time is, it's not an issue. It's that one percent that you gotta, we're always.
I will say that it was the high school, and some of the expanding we've done since the school was built, like, so the Health and Living Center's been there since two thousand nine, maybe eight or nine. We could never make an announcement over there. They can't hear, there's no intercall. So that will be fixed. Now we've got the new barn that's out there, the greenhouse. You know, all those areas now will be covered in intercall, which is wrestling building. All classrooms.
That's like the improvement as far as safety on our campus covers.
And if I'm understanding the key situation correctly, so take for example Shannon Knott, she's a middle school employee, she works my Twenty-First Century After School. So the keys that she has, the one key, if all classrooms in our district are keyed the same, her one key will get her into her classroom, and then when she comes to my campus, whatever classroom she may be using for that, I've scored a wrong one, that's the key.
Yes, and to take that and go in further with it, let's say you, there's a, a, been an incident where there's a shooter or something, a fire. The, the first protocol is to be able to be in keys you can, get to class the next classroom. If you're sitting there trying to figure which key goes where, you're got a problem. One key goes, no matter what, our campus around, hey, we can get in our, get in our shift door locks for the various examples. So that's another reason we can do that as well. It's good.
So you're gonna have a motion, we need to make.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve uh the quote for the hospital events, for the revision of, of granting our whatever system, our system.
Intercom.
Intercom system.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Mr. Moody, thank you. Good. All right, Ms. Walsh, nineteen sixty-five football team recognition. That's back in my era.
Back in the day. I do, it's before mine, just say it.
Before yours. Do you want, Ms. Walsh?
You're just a baby.
I don't know if y'all know this, but it's not gave me the top, so I was.
But she didn't.
And she was awesome. She was our aunt one day, she went to the park. Then I also want to add, Brian, Mr. Moody, what a great job he did for saying, for our schools. And it's been a couple of years ago when we had a team from D P I come and do an assessment at our school. And uh they told us that of all the schools that they're in across the state, that our school was probably the safest school.
It's where you switch up, I saw it. It's on time.
Good, just to give yourself.
I have given you a look. So uh, we have this football thing here. So um, you know, one thing that we take into account in our community is our athletic, uh, athletes. And uh, so there has been a lot of interest in our community to recognize the nineteen sixty-five football team uh as state champions. Uh, during that time, there was a period of ten years or so that the state of North Carolina did not have state championships. Uh, they could play as far as regionals, or that they did not cultivate the season with the state championship. So if you were looking at the, the first page that I gave you, uh, it is a picture of our nineteen sixty-five uh football team. Uh, there are lots of people. Uh, there are lots of people in there that probably we know from our community that are big, uh, Black Knight supporters. Uh, Lamar Chris, uh, David Crowe, who was a former school board member. Uh, Garrett Step, who was also a Grand County school employee, uh, Ira Rogers, who was a coach. Uh, Bernie Rattler, uh, David Crowe, you know, he was the quarterback, I think, at this team. Uh, Randall Madison, Mr. Madison's dad was also a member of the nineteen sixty-five team. Uh, and they were a very successful football team. Uh, for the season, they had ten wins, one tie and one loss, and, uh, the title was with Andrews, seven to seven. Uh, if you look at the scores down through there, you can also see that they won by, uh, large margins. Uh, during the season, they scored three hundred and sixty-two points to their opponent's forty-two points uh, in twelve games. So they had a very, uh, impressive, impressive season that year.
So, Ms. Walsh, if I may add, yeah, I'm really, I'm pretty sure when they played Silver, it's twelve to nothing. So we beat them twelve to nothing. Silver that year, Silver Webster, I think it was, at the time.
Yeah.
They went on to win the two A. State championship, or state, whatever.
Right, we can look at that too. So the second page that I gave you, we're not really gonna, um, any time with that. But I just wanted you to have that, just so that you can see for yourself um, what accurate and detailed records that the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, uh, keeps. I have, uh, been on the phone with several people from the High School Athletic Association and Q Tucker, which is the commissioner. Uh, and they pride themselves in Cuban, uh, records and making sure that those are, uh, correct. Uh, so I, the only one, and I just didn't spend very much time with this document, but the only one I did notice, Riley Anderson is listed in there. Uh, and I'm sure when that's updated, uh, Hugler, I don't know, it's will be listed in there. So, uh, but that, it's a little bit about the records. The third document that I gave you, if you will look on the last page. This is a list of all the state championships, uh, the results and the scores, uh, from every year from, uh, nineteen thirteen. Uh, but if you will, that's on the last page. Uh, there is an asterisk there, and it says regional championship, that state championship games played. So, uh, they did not play state championships, like I said, in a period of like ten or eleven years. So that is that document. The next document is a football state championship list. And, uh, if you will look on the second page to nineteen sixty-five. So at the time in nineteen sixty-five, there were four classes. There were class A, class double A, class triple A, and four A. So during that time in our class A, they played down to where there were four regional winners. We were region four. Uh, and, and that's as far as it went. They did not play on the game. So if that were today, in order to be a state champion, they would have had to play two more games. Uh, so they, they were the, a runner, I mean, for our region. If you look over there, and you did see that Silver Webster, uh, was in class two A. Uh, I know that when I was in high school, that was a big, um, lot of competition between S and Silver Webster, and, and there were five region champions in that region. So the other thing I want you to notice on this document that several people have said to me is that, well, reasonable uh, counts this nineteen sixty-five as their, as a state championship team. Reasonable does not count it as a state championship team. Uh, Reasonable High School has more state championships than any other school in the state of North Carolina. They have nineteen. And if, when you look over this, they had, they won the state championship in nineteen thirty, nineteen thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, and forty, forty-five, fifty, fifty-four, two thousand and two, two thousand and three, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-three. And that is nineteen state championships. In nineteen forty-three, they tied with Laurinburg, and in nineteen sixty-three, they have listed that as co-champions. Uh, and if you go over and look at nineteen sixty-three, you will see they were co-champions in our region because they tied with Reasonable and the Pride. Did you get this off of their website? So this has come, some of this has come, I've got stuff everywhere. This has come from the High School Athletic Association. I have got articles here from their local newspapers. And I have went on to their athletic, I've like verified the information on here, going to their athletic department. The only, uh, problem that I remember to, yeah, I read in our class A was that two of the schools, uh, it is Littlefield High School, that high school that longer existed was consolidated with Lumberton High School. And then Glen Albion, it was consolidated with Freedom High School. So those two no longer exist. So, um, the, the next document that I have is, uh, the most state records. And if you'll notice on the second page, it has reasonable, has nineteen championships from nineteen thirty until present time. And if you will look on the third page over, it says from, so second paragraph, it says from nineteen sixty-one to nineteen seventy-one, the NCH SSA did not play state championship games. Instead, the NCH SSA ended the season at the regional championships. Reasonable won two region two west regional championships and tied in the third at the three level, at the three A level during that time. But the NCH SSA does not count those as state championship wins. However, many people in the community and region do count those as state championships. But they, Reasonable High School does not count that as a state championship. They have clearly noted in their records and everything that they are a, um, regional champion. So that is the way they list that. The next article, and like I said, this came from Wikipedia, which some of it's a P D S, sometimes was not accurate, I don't know. But Littlefield High School, like I said, uh, has consolidated with Lumberton High School, so their records were very limited. The underneath athletics, it says state's Littlefield sports teams were the Hornets. In nineteen sixty-five, they won the region two class A championship in football. There was no state championship at the time. So they also, uh, list that as a region two class A championship. So we've been on, Robbins High School was region four. The next article came from the Hickory Record, uh, newspaper, uh, and this also, uh, was from Glen Albion. That was in our, uh, region, or in our class A classification. And that has consolidated with Freedom High School in nineteen seventy-three. The second paragraph, uh, says the Green Wave won Negroes Conference Championships in Western North Carolina and won more games than any other class A team in the state from nineteen forty-nine to seventy-three. And the article was about one of their coaches. It says some of Coach Wilson's teams were the victim of a decision by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association to eliminate state championship games and recognize east and west champions only during most of the sixties. During that time, however, Wilson became a really nice active hospital coach in North Carolina, ranked fifth in the nation. So they also alluded to that, that they, uh, were, you know, they played as more than a game. One of the other things that, uh, come up that I did ask, uh, just took, uh, Q Tucker about, uh, the next sheet says one A Memphis championship results is that in two thousand and twenty, Murphy High School, they did count that as a state championship. Uh, so when I talked to Q Tucker, she said they are co-champions. That's the way it's listed. Because those of you that call basically, remember that in two thousand and twenty, it came down to Murphy High School and Weldon High School girls' basketball teams, and this COVID hit, so they never got to play the championship. And she said the reason that they were listed as co-champions is because it came down to two teams. So they were co-champions.
That's what they, they literally just stopped a lot there.
Yeah, you know, they got it. And so that's the way Murphy High School listed, and also Weldon High School, they both say co-champions. The next one is a, a letter, and I, I would say I'm just presenting the facts. I'm not partial either way. And, you know, so I guess what it will come down to is the board will vote whether or not we are going to recognize it as a state championship or not. And I don't have, you know, I'm just presenting my research. Uh, the last is a letter from Q Tucker. I have talked with her for several times since back in the fall, and I had talked to her, uh, before Christmas and told her that I would like to have something in writing. Uh, and then she said, well, wait till after Christmas, and said, when I talk to her again, uh, this is what she said to me. And it says, uh, Ms. Walsh, forgive my delay in giving you something in writing. I had to check with a colleague who was on staff in the late eighties and did much research relative to the history of NCH SSA. I know that it is always difficult to explain things like this when people are rightfully passionate and emotionally involved at their local school. He noted that this is not the first time we have faced inquiries about this, so please consider some of his research. For a period of time from nineteen sixty-one to nineteen seventy-one, the board of directors of the NCH SSA made the decision for a variety of reasons that football competition would not cultivate with the state championship game. This impacted all four classes at times during this period where a regional or even a sectional championship was as far as it could go. So there was no state championship declared, no champions declared, since they did not play off to a single winner. The format clearly stated there would be no state champion in football. The board has never gone back and retroactively declared a state a state champion in any sport after the fact. It is not exactly the same thing, but consider this. In the case when a team that won a state title later is declared ineligible, the team that played in the finals has not been declared a state champion, even though that team would have officially gained a fourth place. In that case, the championship is vacated. And that, and there was an example of that, I think in two thousand, uh, in two thousand and twenty maybe. And you can look, uh, where it lists the state championships, and you can see where, I think it was four A, it says vacated. Uh, in some classifications during this particular time, there were as many as five schools that won out as far as they could in a single class. So if this were done for Robbinsville, it would have to be considered for all schools and all classes. That would mean in one year, there would be seventeen state champions in just four classes. And that with no games determining those ultimate winners, and again, done well after the fact. The NCH SSA has historically always been very consistent in terms of showing in its record state champions who won that ultimate state championship game, as well as the rare occasions that there were only regional or sectional champions, but still recognizing that achievement. I hope this gives you what you need to share at the board meeting. Best wishes. So that is the stance from Q Tucker. It will always remain in, uh, the record books with the state of North Carolina is we were a regional, region four, uh, champion, but not a state champion. So, uh, you know, if we want to recognize state champions, can our community, that be up to the board? Uh, but as far as if anybody ever goes back and checks record books, or it will not change that. So.
Well, I really do believe that, I think Reasonable does count it, but, um, and I think, you know, there were state foul games in sixty-eight, three seventy-one. There was sixty-seven great state foul games. Uh, the question is, and I don't even know why we go outside the county. I mean, why? Because I'm pretty sure Silver Webster, they, they acknowledge it, Andrews acknowledges theirs, Pitts acknowledges theirs. We should have just kept it local. We should have just done it. Um, um, personally, did these boys qualify for the playoffs? These young men, these boys that played with the Diggos, they haven't, they're men. Some of them have gone to their eternal home. Some of these went and fought in the jungles of Vietnam.
Yeah, yeah.
And came back, and came back, not heroes in this country. You don't know that.
Yeah.
Um, did we qualify? Yes, we did. Did we go as far as we could? Yes, we did. Uh, and we did win our last game. So Murphy was regional champs, and you're right, they were co-champs. Uh, but they recognized that. And I think I have been approached, I have been approached by several, several people in the community, what do we need to do? And I said, well, I know Ms. Walsh is working on this. Uh, uh, I said, we'll try to get this going. I think that we need to recognize these men thousands, like I say, some have gone on. Uh, I think we need to recognize them and put them on our board as nineteen sixty-five champions, state champions. I think going forward, we need to change our wear that we have. Um, it's something, it's something this community is very passionate about. And I don't know, have any of you all been approached by anyone? Have you, Mr.?
Now, I've talked to a few people, but I have, I've made the, I've initiated the conversation.
About you, Mr. Neil.
I talked to Ronnie Postel, and he's very adamant about it. He's in his eighties now. And he's, and I, and I certainly have no objection.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm for it. I'm.
I will say this, I mean, obviously, I probably kind of stayed back, my thought it was only staying. But as a member, uh, voting member of the Grand County Athletic Hall of Fame, when we made the decision to induct the state championship teams into the Athletic Hall of Fame, the first team that we inducted was the nineteen sixty-five regional championship team. They were inducted just like the later state championship teams have been inducted as part of that group now. You know, as far as they'll be on the side of that decision, I feel like the board needs to make the direction we go. But I will say that looking at what Q Tucker has said about, you know, Murphy's girls, and I think they've been well, or someone was the other name, I can't remember. But, uh, being champs, if you look back at these years, you know, in class three, I think there was just two teams every year, other than Reasonable or Bar and Tyler. So, you know, it didn't like any kind of incoming out of the two, they'd always made them state champions. They just did that for Murphy and well, that's, I mean, you've got Greenwood Canton here in class three, there were two teams. And you've got some of them, there were four A state championship games, obviously, because there's only one team listed there. So while one A was left out, I have no idea, but it looks like one and two A, uh, they need to play as many games as the others. They've been doing trial and things like that at that time.
Well, I do know I've had even young folks, young folks younger than me, much younger than me, and older folks saying, I have three people ready to give money right now. I think there's some money already out there to have this put on our signs.
I will say this, we just spent a large sum of money, uh, out of the athletic department, uh, to redo that sign. So
I'm, I'm just saying.
Seven thousand dollars for this football city. So if it's gonna be changed, the athletic department should not have to foot the bill to make that change. Because we just spent over four thousand dollars on the signs.
Okay, let me ask you this, Mr. Madison. Uh, can we not just add it?
Well, it needs to be in order, I mean, we can use the same sign, uh, we, when this sign is made, we make, it is made where we can, you know, some of the lager can be taken off, with more lager put on. Uh, we even made it where the knife head on one end can be removed, so we can add state championships as we went forward there. So that sign can be altered. I just don't think the athletic department thinks that, foot that bill. Because we, athletic department paid for the one down there. It was over four thousand.
I'm saying right now, you will give us a cost to add that on to there. I don't think there's going to be a problem, especially if, 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 uh, Debbie puts this in the grand store, and I'm assuming if we pass this as a board, I'm assuming this, the, this can run through the high school because you will have to take care of that.
Yes, yes.
And so any monies, any monies that somebody
We can send them to that.
Will need to come to the high school, through the high school. And any money that's already been raised, come to the high schools, correct?
Yes.
And can you get us a price?
We can. As a matter of fact, we have already, I thought, Ms. Buchanan, we went through a company in Hayton County to bring the sign for us. And she was already contacted, you know, but we did not, we have a price back. That's exactly how much it would cost to fix it. But we have to contact.
So I have a question, like in Reesville, where they have theirs as Western three A state champs. Will we also be worth that on the constitution too? Are we just going to put state champions? Or are we going to put Western one A?
No, we're just going to put nineteen sixty, we're going to put nineteen sixty-five, the, the year nineteen sixty-five was the rest of it.
That's up y'all.
And, and I've had lots of people, you know, I have, I have respect for the gentleman that I know that were on that team. And they played as far as they could and had a great season, and they deserve the recognition that, you know, they, what they deserve. But I have also, and I've had a lot of people that are really wanting to see this happen, but I've also had a couple of people that do not. I think that there are a lot fewer that don't, that they feel like since they didn't play it all the way out. But I think there's more that I have exposed with that, that support this.
But Chairman Nelson, I want to make a motion that we recognize the nineteen sixty-five football team as champions and it be added to our boards and going forward, it be added to our waders if we need to. I'm sure we could. I don't think, I don't think money's going to be a problem. And I agree with you. I think, I think the public will come forward and, and get this done. I thought this was very much a passion. Glad to see it being done, especially for these men now that used to be young team that played on that football field that had a lot of passion for this game.
Plus, they shut out eight out of their twelve opponents, which is, which is impressive.
There are numerous members of that team that have been inducted as individuals.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so I would like to make that motion that, that we do that. And Mr. Madison, if you will check, you'll bring us a price. I'm sure, and if people already, if we pass this today and they just want to start bringing money to you to the high school, they can, right?
Start bringing it today.
They start bringing it today. So.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? And I can't vote, but I would vote.
Ms. Walsh, I want to thank you for this past, that you've done a wonderful thing. And I appreciate you, appreciate this information you put together for this. And so thank you for this.
There's a lot of people that are a little passionate about it.
I know they are. And I think we need to do this for this community, especially for men.
Yeah.
I really am quite grateful to.
Ms. Walsh, can I be?
So you said, and I've looked into this too, this question many times, at the end, but nineteen sixty-one, seventy-one. We already recognized sixteen, nine, seventeen teams.
Well, no, I can say.
I know what I'm saying here. Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. So it's sixty-five, I think it makes all sense.
Consistent.
Sixteen, nine, seven, we were going to bring. Yeah. Weird time.
Yeah, it's kind of weird.
Thank you, board. Appreciate that.
Mr. White, facilities update.
Sir, I wanted to give you guys a quick update on the meeting we had last week, a little bit about the football season. Not to invite Ms. Bassett to join in, it's anytime you'd like to. We had a large group there that met and had representatives, of course, from LS three B. And we had representatives from Graham County, Jason Moreno was there. We had representative of the Board of Education there. Of course, we had a central office representation, school bandage representation, school ladder from the high school, middle school there. And we also had representatives from several different athletic teams, including football cheerleading and band, that all came in. We had some really good conversations about what is needed in the new design. Some of those things that I wanted to mention included the line of sight, which was a problem this past year. One thing that I brought up specifically was legroom on the bleachers, because it was really hard for me to even sit down and not put my knees in somebody else's back. Adequate room for cheerleading, for cheerleaders, and adequate room for the band. Another thing that was discussed and is going to be a driving force in this project is the accessibility to facilities through the Americans with Disabilities Act. Now, of course, that act was legislated in the early nineties. Our stadium already existed at that point, so we were grandfathered in, you know. But now that we are doing improvements there, we are going to have to follow all of these requirements. And so that will be a driving force behind what's going to happen here. As we, we learned and we discussed that this project will not be completed before next football season. So it will not be completed. And so with that said, we will be having temporary bleachers again next year. So we will have temporary bleachers again for next football season. What we discussed was that the best route here is probably getting the plans made, get everything exactly like we wanted. Have those plans reviewed, all the people that need to have input on it. Finalize these, go through the bidding process and have everything ready to break ground as soon as next football season finished. So it looks like the project, you know, you know, just, I think we need to make sure that we get our plans in order and have everything exactly like we want before we ever program. And that would, of course, be after football season next year. Now, since we've talked about a little bit about temporary bleachers, we did have this discussion that we're going to have temporary bleachers again anyway, then what we need to do is quit ahead and try to get those in place, get those things ready, and try to have those in place by graduation. Where we can use football stadium, use the facility, facilities at stake for our graduation activities.
And so. I got a question, sir, on the temporary bleacher. Are we going to go ahead and put the base down, the concrete slab?
So after talking with Scott and Mark, so there actually does not have to be a concrete slab put down. Basically, what they will do is they will drill, and then they will pour soot deep, and then there will be four columns that the bleachers will set on or go down in. And the design of our stadium is going to be much, much better, but it is, we're going to have to deal with the same thing that last year for one more year. So, and the main reason, the grading, all can easily be done between now and the time we have football season. But if we started tomorrow and we ordered the bleachers tomorrow, they're, they would not be here by August or September. They've been working on Madison County High School on their facility. It's going on three years, and the bleachers were supposed to be in there in October, then they pushed it to January. Now they think they're just now starting to come in, because there's always changes that need to be made. So after discussion with him, I mean, it's obvious that if we want to have home football, which is vital to our community, then we're going to have to bring bleachers again. And, you know, but our bleachers then, we can go ahead, once the design is made, those bleachers can be where they can be sitting here ready as soon as football season's over with to get the grading done and to put it up some. You know, really, obviously, the last year, we'll have to deal with this, but the grading work is going to be much more extensive than what we probably thought it would be, because it's going to, actually, because of where our restrooms are. As you come around to go down to the restrooms on the home side, that's too steep for ADA regulation. So we're going to have to cut that down some, or come up with some way to level that for people with wheelchair access, you know, things like that. So, and they also talked about extending the bleachers and sending them with the press box and the fifty yard line and extending the, possibly both directions, which would give you, you know, if you extend them that way, then you can have more legroom and fewer, maybe rows of bleachers, but a lot longer facility. So I think that's a great idea. Cheerleaders and the band really like that possibility of having their own sections down on the end where our boys warm up and come out. So, some really good ideas. Really good discussion.
Yeah, we did talk about that we were going to try as, as much as we can to get a better quality temporary bleacher. You know what we're going to say, someone's horrible, but you also know it was, it was last minute. I mean, ours were like, the ones we were going to get were caught with tornadoes. There's nothing we could do in order to have bleachers. That's, that's the best we could do. So we're going to make every effort to have better bleachers, but, but within our possibility to.
Jason Moreno was.
Are we going to have better access of getting in and out?
Yes.
So for this year, probably not. But in the future, with the new bleachers, they will be fully accessible from the top and also accessible from the lot. So, you know, yes, the access will be much better than what it, than what it was in my opinion, even when we have.
But not this next year.
This next year, there's really just things we can do with portable bleachers, because bringing, bringing portable bleachers back in, we're going to have to leave everything just like it is to be, because we're going to have a black surface to set them, set them all, so.
Hey, talk about it. There's an emergency.
Well.
I guess just do the best we can do. At what, who's, who's, where does the cost go to the, these next permanent temporary bleachers that come in? Who's putting that cost?
It will be encapsulated in the, in the total cost that we're, that we talked about with the count.
With the count, okay.
Which will ultimately.
Because we did not know that was going to have to happen again, so.
Well, we, we speculated that there was a possibility.
And there's other things that we've also talked about too, like for instance, our scoreboard, it's right now ten years old. It's going to be out of warranty. It's got, the board parts are very hard to get rid. So we talked about possibly incorporating a scoreboard into this new space and, you know, some other.
That may be ditched, I don't know.
Talked about improving the lights, where, you know, you can, and we can add possibly a little bit to the lighting where, you know, it would flash on and off and all, and all kinds of things.
I was going to say, these signs that you see on the road have so much better lighting than our scoreboard, because sometimes you can't really tell on the score.
I do have another question. It's like, hopefully simple, but, you know, we do the rise parade every month where we celebrate kids with perfect attendance, good behavior birthdays, and if you grew academically. And the kids love it. Doing it, it's, it's kind of a little bit of a logistical nightmare for us actually pulling it off, but we're going to stick to it because the kids love it. One thing we had talked about was taking the student body down to the stadium, letting all the kids that are going to be in the parade, on the stuff parade around the sidelines with the nostalgia, you know, being on the football field and things like that. Is it technically at this time considered still a construction zone? Or can our school kids use that here in the day and it's fine for now?
It should be fine right now.
Okay. Because I had been told at some point that we had to just not, it's, it's under construction again. I guess it was when the bleachers were being removed.
Just during that time. I mean, I would, I just, I would not have my kids up there where those bleachers were. You have no reason.
No, 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 they'd be on the other side.
Right. That was just during the time that they were removing the bleachers.
So we can still use that facility.
I would, you know, use the visitor side of the bleachers, because they're all.
As it gets closer to the, in the spring season, you might want to check. Representative Jason Postel, when they start like seating and do stuff on the field. But last summer, we were worried there for a little while, but it wasn't going to be great.
Let me say, especially if we're going to have graduation hour, which is, is not sperm, but that is a possibility. The spraying of the field is a necessity. It has to happen in a timely manner. Last year, there were several events, things that were meant to be scheduled down there, and we didn't get to spray it. And the field looked awful until June or July, obviously. So, because we weren't able to spray and kill with pre-emergent, stuff like that, that has to happen in a timely manner.
And I mean, the only thing that, that I know of that we wouldn't have down there, which is early May, like second week of running usually is our field day. And then after that, we're not going to do it.
And if you could let me know exactly the dates now, I can go ahead and move them on the calendar.
I'll get that, y'all.
Because I think it's a few days after the spraying, you're not supposed to be on it, so.
Let me add too, that the discussion about moving the band and the cheerleaders to the other end was very well received because our band has had some, you know, visitors that throw things at them and stuff because they have to walk all the way around to access the field. So by putting them on that end, the cheerleaders and the band will have easy access on and off the field, and they won't have to go through the visitor side. So, yeah, I think that was a great bit right here.
And I think from a safety perspective too, you don't have people walking through there, even coming into the game.
Okay, portrait of a graduate initiative.
Yeah, this is, this is just for your information. You've already seen it before. I think probably you've, you've, I've probably been presented. I just wanted to keep this in the back of your mind. Several people from Graham County and people from across the state participated in the rollout of this. I think, Mr. Caringer, you might have been the board representative of some of the stakeholders phone calls. We've had students, teachers, administrators. So this is just a set of skills, and you can see on the second page, it's really the best, of what I think most people would agree, if we graduate children that have skills in this set here, they would be a good citizen. They would be an employee. They would be a good neighbor. So this is a rollout from the state Department of Public Instruction based on the input that they have from, from, you know, the business communities, the students, parents. So this is really just for your information, just to keep it in the forefront of your mind, that when you hear portrait of a graduate, and, you know, these, these skills don't happen just in high school. They start when you walk through the door as a, as a little with, with Miss Hooper. So, you know, there is also, and I've put links there. There are also links that just give some suggestions of lesson plans and how this correlates with our curriculum that we have in the state. So that's just for your information. You're going to hear some things that tie back to it. Actually, the next thing I'm going to talk about ties back to it. So just so you know, when people learn about Portrait of a Graduate, it's just a framework. It's just a thought. These are some great skills that we would like to share with our students, make sure that they have been exposed to or have when they leave our doors to help them be more successful.
Okay, Ms. Knight, continue on with the Parents' Guide to Student Achievement.
So you have had some information from attorney Davis. You heard all over the, the news media, the Parents' Bill of Rights. I, I really, I'm not here to talk about Parents' Bill of Rights, but there are some things that as a school system, we are required to do to kind of get information put in place where it's easier for parents to access things. And so we were required by the, by the state legislature to January, February-ish, by the end of the school year for sure, to have this together. So we're, I hope we're a little ahead of the game. But this is just the Parents' Guide to Student Achievement. This is, I said, again, this is mandated by legislation that we pull this together just at, just to give links. It's, it's going to be on our website, but these are just links which go back either to statute that we didn't create, but we are governed by, or policies that are your board policies already. Nothing here is new. There is no new information in this document. It is just a way for parents to click on things and get, it's kind of one stop shop. You know, so I just wanted to share that with you. There's been a lot of hard work going into that from the district level and all of the schools. And it is a document that probably as, as these things change and the links need to be updated, it's a living document. So just so you know that. So, and it's all suggestions. It's just there as a tool for parents if they need it. So you'll see that go on our website very soon. So.
And Ms. Knight, you're still on fiscal year twenty-five school cal.
Yes. So in your packets, you have a twenty-four, twenty-five draft school calendar. This, I, I say this every year, if you've been in this for several years, you hear the same spiel. This is created by the Calendar Committee, which has representatives from each school and the district level. There are many mandates from state legislation that we have to abide by to make the school calendar. For this past year, we did qualify for a waiver, weather waiver. So we are able to start school the, on the Monday closest to August nineteenth. For this year, it happens to be August nineteenth. Otherwise, if we didn't have a weather waiver, it was just August twenty-sixth. So that allows us an extra week. To be very clear with you, what dictates the calendar is really the first semester of the high school, their, their instructional period. We want as many days as we can to. their, their instructional period. We want as many days as we can to give the high school in the first semester, days of instruction so that our students don't have to go home for Christmas break and come back and take a test. So, um, so if we work very hard, which our calendar committee has worked very hard, we're able to get maybe not as many days as we want, but as many days as we can squeeze in there, Mr. Patterson, um, of instructional days for our staff. I mean, you throw in, you know, you've got, you've got Thanksgiving in there and you've got some other, you know, holidays, so it's kind of hard. And if we have snow, let me say, it really changes the schedule. So if we have snow before the, you know, we, the, the only thing that makes fun of this calendar office is if we had a several days of snow in the first semester. But anyway, so, um, there, there were a little, a few changes, there's a couple of extra workdays that were added to the beginning of the calendar, which, you know, really those workdays are either added to them, they're, I would say optional, there are options if you have the days to take. New teachers don't have option days, you know, but, uh, there's a few extra days at the very beginning, um, which are essentially taken from the very end of the calendar. So, I mean, that's kind of where those go. Um, I think we've heard from the community, which by the way, this was put out, um, on social media for any input. Uh, when I looked yesterday, there was no response, no input from the community. Uh, it went out to the staff hall, uh, at least a couple of times for their input, and they were asking it back to their representatives, and the calendar committee met twice this year, cause there were some questions. So we, we met twice. Um, so I, I do feel like some of the complimentary things are, I think, staff and families, like that we've tried to chunk some of the workdays together so that you might have a long weekend, uh, as families, so maybe go somewhere. Um, the, the, one difference, uh, that you may see April, spring break, um, is, is the second, usually the second full week of April. So the way that days feel this year actually kind of looks like the third week, but it aligns also with Easter, Good Fridays on the eighteenth. So, um, that was, uh, at least a, a comment, and we worked through that in committee. Um, by and large, the staff is very pleased with this. So, and the principals all are pleased with it. So my recommendation would be that we, that, that you approve this calendar. But, um, we're up in the questions.
I can say I've been on this calendar committee as a representative, and this is an undertaking, folks. So I appreciate anybody that comes and serves on this committee.
Yeah, and just, just for the public's awareness, students are governed by a number of hours. The state says there has to be a minimum of a thousand twenty-five instructional hours. Really in about a seven and a half hour, then you've got about six hours you can count. Um, years ago, we started adding twenty minutes a day, which now, we don't even pay any attention to, but that kind of gives us six hours and twenty minutes, so six point three instructional hours in a day. So students are governed by hours. Staff is governed by days. So staff has to have a two hundred and fifteen days. So working on those two systems is kind of hard sometimes when you're making a calendar, but then I think the calendar committee worked really hard, and I'm proud of what they came up with.
I think it's good, but I had someone talk to me, well, I had a couple of people say, they like to see all year where it says no school for kids. Those, cause somebody doesn't know what annual leave and, and what, there was another one, you know, whatever the other one was. So, I don't know, they showed me a calendar from another school and it's like they had two colors. It's like one was on top and one was on the bottom, and it said, the annual leave day is also a no day, no school for kids day, something like that. And that's, that's the one thing that's been reported back to me.
Maybe we could, just a statement, you know, really truly, if there's a color, except for green, I mean, those are a school day. Yeah, maybe down here on the, on the ledge and just put no, you know, no student day or something.
Such as that, and no student day, so the parents are more.
On the ledge.
So it's trying to figure out what is that.
Yeah, they can look on the ledge and read it.
And the last day of school, something, something that says first day and last day. Um, that's, that was the other thing said, but I'm.
Well, so it says first day on the, when you read the middle, it says first day and it says last, it should say.
It doesn't say last day, does it? Cause I know, they told me it was on, I don't know.
Yeah, last, last student day, May twenty-third, end of fourth grade period, last student day.
Yeah, there is a last student day.
Okay. Oh, I see right there.
Yep.
Death, motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar as presented by Ms. Knight.
I still move.
Do I have a second?
Say it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Ms. Knight personnel.
Uh, yes, I have a, uh, couple of names of teachers, substitutes, volunteers, um, and custodial substitute to bring to you during closed session.
Okay. All right, board proceed, Ms. Davis.
Yeah, this is a long meeting, so I'm just gonna point, I said point of order at the last meeting, and I discussed with Mr. Nelson, but he kind of decided how he wanted to do it, which was in, um, in the, in the meeting like this, under the agenda, instead of a separate meeting, about board policies that are not followed, procedures that are not followed. And I want you to know that I don't think everybody's bad, I think everybody's good, soul of the earth, good, proud to work with all of you. But I'm here for a specific reason, and it's different than other people. I'm very into board policies. I created a five oh one C three non-problem. And when I created, I wrote my board policies. I, I decided who's on the board, I argued with the IRS guy, and it was all me. Well, they say this is like a corporation right here, and we are, every single member, board operator is one. And that's true, but who wrote our board policies? We didn't, none of us did. We voted in. That's your constitution in action. When they voted for us, the people voted for us. Every single person here has voted for policies, we're about to get somewhere in a minute. It's gonna have to be voted on. Nobody wrote them individually. So when I look at this, I see, this is my constitution. I'm a constitutional body elected in it, and when I have my policies, which I put it outside. When I see these, I see my obligation. I'm married to these when I became a board member and took my oath. So when they're broken, I take it serious, but I didn't know what to do about it when you see board policies being broken. So when I read, uh, Robert's Rules of Order, which is ours, it's a law, part of the true procedure, if you read the bottom of these, every single one, remember from our Graham County website. Says Robert's Rules. Well, you know, I never read that until December, and I found point of order on there that said, I'm obligated to tell every time a policy is broken in here. Every board member as well. That's our, that's where, that's, you're elected in, you're supposed to do that, it's like your job. Remember, we can't cheat, we're married to these. So I had to bring up point of order last meeting because I had an agenda broken for me personally, I've seen it broken forever. I've seen the superintendent not following the board policies that talk about secretarial. We had, we had a discussion about how long we should wait for documents. It was that long near then. I'm supposed to see the superintendent's office as my secretary to help me. How long have you waited for documents? From a secretary. Have you ever waited three weeks, two months? I have. And it's not fun. And there was some discussion in closed session that it should be two weeks. No, it should be what the board policy already says, this is Graham County. Now, I'm not trying to hold anybody's feet to the fire when I'm holding my own feet to the fire about it. Okay, if you ask me for information, I'd give it to you in a timely manner. Ethics has been broken in here. I'm sorry, Mr. Nelson, but I'm probably gonna bash you pretty good. All right, I don't believe these people are evil. I believe these people have just gotten into bad habits. Ex UPS driver, I had bad habits when the supervisor got out of the truck. What was my reasons I had to follow the rules? For safety and for money. I've certainly got the bad habits, right? I think that's what it is. I don't think anybody in here is inherently evil. It's just there's bad habits that's developed, and we gotta pull them in. And ethics, the ethics violations in here are pretty bad. I mean, Mr. Nelson, you lied to me first meeting.
So I'm a liar, I'm a liar?
I'm just telling, you tell me if you lied to me, you can just go to the meeting and look and see what you said here and what happened.
I'm a liar.
Did you lie to me?
I, if I did, I don't mean to.
I don't think you do, gosh, I don't. I think that you're.
Well, but you're calling me a liar.
Well, here's how you, a definition of a liar is someone that does something wrong and they don't, they, they, they don't correct it, like, oh, I was wrong.
But if I told you to lie, I apologize.
That's nice, I'm glad that you're doing it.
Can I have our student step out? Cause I really didn't feel like this appropriate conversation, cause then I have to.
I could be with you a hundred percent. Well, can we see on the website?
They don't think you kept their video.
Well, they can keep the video going. Yeah, please. Now, I don't want to call you now, Mr. Nelson, but you told me three times I'd be on the agenda for the January third meeting. You gave me it in writing in an email, it was from Mr. Nelson, two hands, copied it as Ms. Davis and Ms. Knight.
And you weren't on the agenda, okay? Now, I apologize, I didn't know that that was.
Well, there's a chairman duty, I hate to tell you, I keep reading all these rules, it's like honest to God, you wanna know the truth, we all broke it, everyone's.
Well, if I broke it, I'm, didn't know.
Okay, well, it was, it was pretty tough. So let me tell you some other things that's happened. If the, if the, the attorney and the, we've got a door open, I'm ready to do this. Oh, she's coming, okay. You want to close that door?
No, I can see the student stopped to be in the middle of this.
There was a little way out there, I didn't know if it was still out there. So, um, when, when, this came to me, I thought that, okay, I'm gonna be on the agenda. I get here, I call Ms. Knight and I tell her, I'm not on the agenda, Mr. Nelson said I was. She said, you're gonna speak in the, um, what was it called? Health Services Park of the meeting. And I did try to speak with her, and I was interrupted. The discussion went on and on around me, I never even got to present what I needed to. You talked terribly to me in that meeting. You made fun of me in front of everybody.
I made fun of you?
Now, I'm telling you guys, this video is so easy to go watch on the Graham Star's website, that everything I'm stating, you can't not, you cannot dispute. I either have an email or I have a thing, but I'm not trying to chew you out and embarrass you in here. But I want you to step down, you're not even, I put it in the paper. But there's a reason, why not? Cause I'm meeting. If you call me tomorrow and ask me for help, I'm coming. I love you, you're a brother in the Lord to me. But I don't want you to bother with these policies, not just for me, not just for me, okay? Pam and I wanted to speak in public comment. Ms. Davis said we were not allowed to speak in public comment. I spoke to two attorneys at the, uh, School Board Association. They said, why would you speak in public comment? I said, because what we were told, or I was told in the meeting, January third, two minutes, two minutes in the meeting, you're gonna see everything I've said pretty much so far, except the town. You said we don't put board members on the agenda.
You know why I said that? I'm gonna tell you why I said that. I've been on board almost sixteen years. You know how many people have been on the agenda that are board members? To you and Ms. Knott.
Okay.
And that's it.
And I see that you have, that's what I said.
And I, so I, I thought that board members weren't supposed to be on the agenda.
Gotcha, but there's a policy. And now I'm right, because, well, I created a board and I am in all kinds of, go read the policy saying. And what's the policy on agenda? Mr. Nelson, Ms., um, Knight made the agenda up, so that's who I need to talk to. A board member may, comma, by a timely request, comma, have an item placed on the agenda, period. There's no restrictions, it's timely manner. So when you said you can't speak on the agenda, I went two months, I never said a word to you in February. I went to a meeting and Ms. Davis, you sat with us in the meeting, we can't speak on, in the public comment. How come you didn't say, well, you can speak on the agenda? How come when Mr. Nelson said you don't?
You can speak, you can add an item to the agenda.
Item, yes.
Item is for the public.
Right, but we went there because we couldn't speak on the agenda.
You put an item on the agenda through chair and.
Then why didn't you say that in the January? Now, again, go to the January meeting, please don't think I'm coming up here making fun and being mean. I love Ms. Davis. I love these people, I don't want to do this. I have to do it because I ran Robert's Rules of Order, Point of Order, and it made me obligated. If I don't say it, I'm going along with this, and I'm not going along with this. This is a, this is a travesty to this board. We did so many things good today, and I was thinking about the whole time. Probably the importance, it's awesome. If I could just stop every time and say, that was great, you know, so that you see, I'm not always trying to complain, I'm just trying to follow rule. Now, this is all things that's been violated, ethics, superintendent's not doing what she's supposed to be doing, and it's because, Mr. Nelson, I believe, that you are covering this. You're not, you're not worried about these ethics rules being, you're not just, you're not that you're mean, you're just not worried about it. But these are all policies. People die on the battlefield for this. People die for us to add this, and I'm gonna stand up for them right now and tell you, this is not right. Mr. Nelson should not be able to tell me three times I'm on the agenda and decide you don't want to put me on the agenda, and then tell me in a meeting, you're not allowed to be on the agenda because we don't put board members on the agenda. You interrupted me rudely so badly that my father, my brother-in-law wanted to come into town, January third, to support me out of a meeting. I mean, well, I don't think Mr. Nelson would do anything to me. He said, well, I think he would. I said, I don't think, well, he made fun of me at the end of the meeting, at the end of the talk, discussion, he did, but I forgive him for hurting, I forgive you. But here's where it went really bad. Closed session, I'm sitting in a closed session meeting, this board is here, all of us, Jonathan was here too that day. There was a whole bunch of people in that meeting. Mr. Nelson yelled so loud at Ms. Knott that he neared, I mean, it, it startled me. How many people were sitting in that room when Ms. Knott got yelled at? If anyone here can say that didn't happen, tell me. It happened. He yelled so loud at her, why didn't he use his gavel? I actually looked up what that is, you wouldn't believe what all that's for. That's for all kinds of stuff, and that's what he should.
You raised a point of order at the last meeting, so I guess I'm gonna do it this time.
Please.
Close session, nobody's gonna respond to you about that, so you.
You don't have to, but this is not, this is not what happened in closed session content.
So you're just talking about ethics, you, you just broke on the slate.
Well, I didn't talk about any content. And you're right, and I would apologize if I did it, but I'm not. Well, I, I, Ms. Ms. Knott was yelled at, and her little elderly mother had been sitting in here with Mr. Nelson, we were talking to, guaranteed. If you'd been standing in the vein where I've worked and Mr. Nelson held that.
Are you through?
Almost through though. You should probably just let me finish, let me tell you why.
What, are you gonna say?
I'm really gonna shut up.
Say something new?
Yes.
Other than Brandon won't repeat?
I'm about to talk about closed session.
You what?
I'm gonna talk about closed session.
Well.
Now, this is where the law's broken.
Are we, are we allowed to talk about closed session in open session?
We're allowed to talk about the rules. The policy itself.
Okay, all right.
Okay, if you have a conversation in this meeting right now, and we're about to go into closed session, y'all gonna leave, doors been closed. Are we allowed to talk about what we did in here in closed session? No, we're not. So last meeting, I went one January to January, and that's just an example of emails that I would be on my channel, and I would be presenting stuff. I don't want to go to the stars, I'm gonna have to go, I really don't, but I will, because I'm required to. We left this meeting last January, or last, last month, however many weeks ago that was, um, talking about point of order. Mr. Nelson said he didn't understand what I was talking about or something.
And I didn't.
Okay, now, I was kind of mad about it, but we got in the bathroom. There was a procedure that needed to go on after point of order, but that didn't happen. But it did happen, so I'm cool with that. But we got in the back session, and Mr. Nelson started talking about open session. We talked about several open session things in that meeting, and we have in multiple meetings. Now, I gotta call into the attorney at the School Board Association, cause I wanted a, a fresh quote, but I'd already talked to two of them, and I was trying to get a third one, which I will get. We're not allowed to talk about anything in open session and closed session. What, if there's five members anywhere, I don't give a crap, if we're standing out there, if we're standing over there, or the turn to the store, if there's more than two people, we're not allowed to talk about anything except closed session things in closed session, and then if, if there's a third person, the company can phrase that. If you have two people, you can talk about anything. If you have two or more, you can't talk about anything, anything to do with school, closed session, open session, nothing. So when we close these doors, there's five members. These are all policies and laws. This is the question I want everybody to ask themselves. You want me to follow? You want me to follow rules? Huh? You want me to? Then everyone else should. Everyone else should follow the rules. And I would say this to my sister, to my dad, to my mom, of course, my parents have had stuff, but I would talk, call anybody out on this stuff, and most folks should want to follow the rules. So closed session was violated, but you know what attaches to this? A spiel she's about to be going through, a whole paragraph of legal. So if we go into the bathroom, I call the bathroom like Smokey, I get, I get a whole thing going, going on that in my mind for fun, because this is disgusting in my sight. But it's, I can make fun. When we go into that bathroom and we start talking about things that are open session, we break rules, we didn't just break rules, now we broke the laws. We broke statutes, laws. Now, if this doesn't stop, I'm gonna go to the DPI, I'm gonna start hopping in Donna Tipton Rogers, almighty most probably starting immediately if I, I'm sorry, Mr. Nelson, if you don't, if you don't break this up, and we get something new going on in here, I'm gonna start hopping in a member of the DPI, and I'm gonna see if I can get some attention. She's a fair-minded person I used to work for. She's a fair-minded person I used to work for. So I, I think I could deal with her. I'm also going to start copying in other attorneys. Ms. Ms. Davis's obligation is to keep us legal. In the closed session last month, I told her, we're not allowed to talk about closed, open session and closed session. I said it in the meeting in the closed session. I'm talking about closed session. Why? Because we resolved all the issues. Do you know actually what happens with closed session, uh, things? After it's done, after we, we resolve it out here, it can become public. Did you know that? There's so many things that people don't know in here and we're expecting to get this told to us. Robert's rules. The, the legal statutes, if you get through what happened in here, we can come out and we vote on it. We know who got hired. We actually resolved it right in front of them. Because it's usually most of personnel that we go in there for. So I'm just going by that. There's all a bunch of things on here. There's legal personnel, legal actions like we're going to take, even sweepstakes. We have, we can talk about that in closed session. But we can't talk about anything to do with open session things in closed session. And we're breaking the laws and, and our attorney is required to, to correct this. And I have never seen her correct any of that and it's gone on multiple times. In fact, you corrected me. I would never have said this to you if you hadn't said this to me. But the first meeting, you took me in the back and you said, you said hell in the, in the meeting. And I wasn't even sure I said it. And you said, you did. You did. And I said, oh, okay. And now I have to examine myself. Did I say that in the context of a verb or a location? No, I used it in a cussing fashion. You said that's, we, we shouldn't cuss out there. You know, right? But you did that in closed session. You know what you're supposed to do in open session, point of order. It's like we were breaking the rules and you say, we could be impetty. Well, I'll be impetty on some things, but I'm not. These are legal actions that can be taken against us for this. Okay? So I'm not, I'm not picking on you. I'm going to keep us legal from here on out. Point of order and I'm going to continue to read and every time I read a few things, I finally broke policies. Every one of us is guilty. For not pointing out, the very first time when I didn't get to speak on the agenda, there should have been four board members saying, uh-uh. There should have been an attorney saying, uh-uh. She has a right to speak on the agenda and for you to tell her not to do and to talk to her in there. So do we want to have the whole standards? I appreciate your apology, Mr. Nelson.
Ms. Davis, um, when I first came on the board and we talked about this and Ms. Davis has corrected us at times that we could not say we needed to, we haven't told us, we need to talk about that in open session. I would remember telling us that. I have something, I will go back. And maybe this is something we have another board training we need to really look at. But it's both, I have an article from the Grand County School Board Association. Um, and I can get in touch with the person maybe, but I even brought it to the board when I first got on the board. Is closed session, is what's done in closed session, really in closed session? And, and, um, it's a very good article.
Yeah, there's a list in the section.
There is, there is.
So you go by the list.
And, and it was very good and I brought it to the board, but, um, I think this is something we probably need to clear in some of our trainings sometimes. It goes, okay.
I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because I was going to ask the board, uh, to, uh, give Ms. Knight permission to bring the School Board Association and maybe bring a couple of their, uh, people to talk about and train us about school board procedure.
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you that, that, that they've got some trainings coming up. Uh, and, and they were having these, Ms. Knight went, uh, Ms. Dinger went, I went. And we went in those little mini sessions and they're trying to have those now instead of being so, I think they're, they're trying to keep those in areas.
Of course, I think they're going back to the, prior to COVID, they have regional trainings. I think they're going back to that and we should be getting a date for those.
And it was very good. I thought it was very, very good. But the School Board Association will come in. I think they will come in and, and do this and because I have been in touch with them also. First training. And, um, I'll drag that article back out because I have a notebook every year. I just made my new notebook for 24, uh, that I, I will drag that article back out about closed session. So. I think that's a good idea, Mr. Nelson.
Okay, so Ms. Knight, uh, with the board's permission, would you, uh, uh, contact the State Board of Education?
It's the School Association.
The School Board Association. And, uh, see if they will come and give us more training on board procedures.
And like I say, their trainings that we went to, they're, they're, they're excellent. They're wonderful. I just wish I could go to more.
Um, Attorney Davis, that would be like the 2000 section of their board policy. I mean, that's kind of the right board. I think that's board operation.
Board operations. Our parliamentary procedure, I believe, is 11. Policy 11.
Isn't that a parliamentary procedure? Basically talks about the Robert's Rules of Order and that's where the whole thing, if you don't go read Robert's rules, you don't understand all.
Is that 11 hundred?
Um, it's.
Consider, you know, to the School Board Association. What is? That you follow your board procedure and you have that. If board procedure doesn't address it, you know, it just says sort of blomming. Go to Robert's Rules of Order. Well, my Robert's Rules of Order is over 400 pages, page five. Boards aren't trained in that. And so that, you know, going to Robert's Rules of Order, I think their, um, school of government has set, has issued several, um, books on procedure. And there's been school boards and municipalities to adopt that. Robert's Rules of Order is called pandemonium in, um, in parliamentary. And what, I mean, it's, they're, they're onerous. So I really think, and that's something I've thought about talking before, is that the school of government, and I think I have it in one of my bags here, um, it's procedure. And that's what you would adopt. If your 2000 word procedure doesn't address it and the School Board Association can't cover X, Y, Z and things change over the years, then you fall back to the school of government rules of order for a public body. It's the school of government rules of order for a public body, not the onerous.
And who has that?
Are, well, I've got a copy. I'm, I've all, I've carried with me for 40 years.
How, is it extensive?
Oh, no, it's, it's.
Can we order one for the?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Does that be an option?
You need to adopt, instead of the onerous rules of, um, Robert's Rules of Order. I mean, you need to learn over 400 pages, page five, if you're going to do it right. Just running around bothering.
Well, so is this something we need to change our policy about?
Well, and bring on the agenda and, you know, look at it first.
Okay, look at.
Yeah, but it's, it's adopting for public bodies.
Okay.
And so if it's not in your section 2000 in your main policy manual, you'll, you'll defer to the public body rules of order published by the school of government and it's a little book and I've got one. Um, but I, that's what I recommended for the board, the honors. Parliamentary procedure. Because if you use parliamentary procedure, there's complimentary motions. There's premium motions. There, you know, you don't have time to do that.
I did the, I did, I told you last time, I did the online.
That's great.
Procedure video and if all of you want to go, because we bought that, the school board bought that. And it was very good and they went into all of that. And some school boards, there's saying some school boards do not use your ruling.
Yes. Which ones are you going to be? We can, you know, went page out of 465.
But it would be good for everybody to watch. I think.
Public, but for public bodies. It's the rules of order for a public body. Your public body was put out by the school of government. It's been revised several times. And you fall back to that if it's not in your 2000 series.
So you can get it to me.
I will, I will work with Attorney Davis to get you a copy of it for your review. That's why I said review it, read it. It's a lot more manageable and that's why it's out. It's because it's for public bodies. It's not for the onerous.
Does that sound good?
Well, I want to know what other school boards are using it. And also, Robert's rules isn't that hard. This is easy unless we got the internet. I found most of my answers, I just went in there like, you can't make a motion when you're not on the agenda, but you can make a motion when you're not on the agenda. There's certain things you got to do right now. You, like, if you might have to bring up something, we got to do it.
But you amend the agenda. You have to go by board policy that says amend your agenda.
Well, you can.
It doesn't say do a complimentary motion or do a parliamentary motion or do a secondary motion. Your board policy says make a motion to amend the agenda.
Well, I'll look it up again. I, um, because I.
You know, we use our policy. And then if we don't have it, it says fall back to Robert's rules, but that's all.
That's, that's what, that's what our policy.
So the school of government put out. Manual for.
But as of today's, as of today, on the website, we go by Robert's Rules of Order.
Until we, until this policy.
Until.
And I'm. I'm pretty sure I have.
I'm working on what you.
We go by your board procedures in section 2000. If there's something in there that doesn't address it.
Well, if 2340 isn't in 2000s, where is it?
It's in your board man, it's in your main policy manual.
Ms. Davis, not hearing me anything.
I'm sorry. I, I, so I'm not going to say anymore. We have a 2000 section that the School Board Association put out for you to follow.
Is it on our website? Absolutely. Under the 2000. Would anyone like to read one, just to print it off of the 2000 section of our school board website? I mean, what is it? I don't know. Maybe I stepped in in the twilight zone, but I'm talking about 2340 of the Grand County Board of Education Policy Manual, page one. There's only one page. And it's, it's our policy. I got it from our website. I just, I don't understand. I might, maybe I'm the nut. I don't know. I must be nuts. Is that 2000 series, 2340? Guys, listen, we all got brains. I'm, I'm leaving here. Y'all have been doing this, this deep in this and I must just sound like the nut. I agree. But I'm going to tell you, I want to answer this. I think none of y'all. It's going to be about, I'm supposed to tell you who should have been here. And if the, the old guard wants to go on with that kind of stuff and, and act like this, this book right here that's on our, our policy, isn't what we're going to go by. I don't know what we'll do in the future. I take suggestions. My, my mind is wide open to anything that's good. But please do not entertain the thought that we have not been following, that we've been following board policies in years and procedures. And I don't know if we need to walk through the door to give you the information, but I mean, I'll probably find something. I'm going to get busy. If all your requests are on the docket, if I don't see something change, so I'm going to make a motion. I want to have a, um, I want to elect a new chairman. Okay? We, we're missing somewhere. You ain't going to do without it? I wouldn't do without it. So next meeting, I'm going to have more stuff and believe me, I'm going to start getting serious about the legal issues because I don't know what to say about this. This is our policy. We don't follow. Damn.
Ms. Davis, board policies.
Please. Hey, I'll just say, hey, Mr. Nelson. Yes, I'm quick and I've worked with you for 31 years.
Yes.
I want you to know I appreciate you. I've walked in by a teacher, I've worked as a school board member and as your principal. I've never seen anyone that's right. Godly man does what's right and is an advocate for our kids. So I appreciate you. Thank you. So.
Absolutely. I have to second that. I have to stand in the same. I teach, I'm a teacher. You served in our military and you care for our children. And you have taken care of the school and these people. I appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
Ms. Davis, you trained me in that in 2000 and you did a phenomenal job in teaching me how to take care of children and keep them safe. I appreciate you.
Let me say.
So I want to say that too. Well, Nelson, I appreciate you. And I think you have your priorities straight as far as was important to this school board and was important to Grand County Schools and our kids. And I appreciate you doing this.
Good. Mr. Nelson, we're getting a better picture about that. Just so you know that. Thanks. Appreciate you.
And Mr. Nelson, I'd like to know that I'm not from here, but you have loved me like I was and I appreciate you.
And I have. Yes, thank you. Alright. Okay, Ms. Davis, go ahead with your board policies.
Policy 3320, um, is on for first reading and you have your folder. And that is school trips. Lester's not here today, but, um, if you'll go directly to H. H is, all the A, B, C, D, E, F, G are, is the same. The change is H and it's all brand new. And, um, I worked with the policy committee, but that was about a year and a half ago. And then I worked with, um, Lester Green because of the issues with refunds for field trips. So when you review this, rest in peace. The only thing that's been changed is there's a H is added. And under H, there are eight points. And that specifies how the money follows the student. There've been some issues, um, for examples, parents may pay the $400, $500 for the trip. The trip gets canceled. You follow the money back, back if it's an individual. Um, if it was fundraising, the money follows that student or that activity for successive years. And then if the student graduates, that money has to be used for that type of activity. So it just spells it out clearly. So if you'll, um, review H, uh, one through A. And Lester looked it over too. In fact, he just looked it over. So that is the change for policy 3320, uh, to be considered. Alright. Policy 2342, voting battles. What, um, changes in here are actually in the first two paragraphs. Public bodies is very different. This, this isn't Exxon. This isn't Tesla. A public body, you must vote. There are no, um, abstentions from voting. And that's, this clarifies that what you do have in the chair's always done. And, and it does, I, I've seen some boards, it just feels odd when you take a motion. For example, Ms. Knott will say that's a conflict, um, because you have to state the reason and that hasn't in. You have to state the reason that, that it's a conflict. Then the board votes on whether that is a conflict or whether that board member can, uh, vote without any bodies. So, um, you got to remember, you're all required to vote. The only way you can't vote is you have the board decides that your conflict will keep you from being fair, unfair or villainy being fair. So, um, that clarifies it and that's always been the law. It's not new. But, um, I think there's a better explanation in here. And then all matters coming before the board for action will be in the form of a motion. Um, and that's in your 2000 board procedure. That came from chapter 115C, it came from the School Board Association that all matters coming before the board, uh, for action will be in the form of a motion. And then a motion is proposed, uh, is a proposal by a member of the board in order for the board to determine action to be taken or a decision to be made. And then a motion by one board member is followed by a board member seconding the motion. The motion requires that the second member of the board agrees to consider the proposal after the motion is set and the chair calls for a vote. Now, so what was paragraph one? Voting is normally by a show of hands.
Okay.
That clarified, you usually show hands. So correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, um, then, um, that you want, that is juxtaposed against, um, a decision to vote, uh, by a voice. And a member can call for a voice, a voice vote.
Give me an example of that. I'm a little confused on that. They would have a show of hands.
Yeah, there wasn't clear the policy. Okay. Let's go back to a motion to adopt school board calendar. Someone made a motion to adopt the. Someone made a motion to adopt the school board calendar. He did, okay. That's an action to be taken or a decision to be made. Okay. Then there was a second. And then you did a show of hands, all in favor. And, and I'll change that, but it needed clarification.
It was all, all in favor, or any, and then it called in favor or any opposed, he always says that.
You have to, you have.
Well, I know you have to say that, but I don't, really don't understand this book, voice vote.
Well. Voting.
I have a dissection in there.
Voting can be permitted by voice, and a board member can ask for a voice.
Oh, okay.
It's always been a.
I understand.
So my words, Ms. Knott would say, I'm for, I'm for, I'm against. So you would just hear, is it just for public rights, maybe?
Clarification.
Clarification, maybe?
Yeah. I love Ms. Klein, sometimes if she doesn't see a show of hands, I mean, a good show of hands, she's a little confused about who's for and who's against.
As long as you have, a board member can call, not just this public, but other public. Can ask for a show of, of a voice vote. But you do it by hand.
We did.
So, that, I'm pretty sure of that. Okay. And then if a board member wanted a voice vote, they could ask for that. You know, sometimes people, you know, they just do their hand like this. I want that clarified, I want that clarified. So you can ask for clarity, and you ask for the opposite, what, you know, voice vote. If you did it by hand, and you asked voice vote, if you wanted me to put voice vote first, then you would do it by hand. So, okay. That's twenty-three forty-two. Then, policy sixty-one twenty-five. We're catching up on some of these, um, you know, the General Assembly was very active. They passed, um, passed emergency bills, you know, to put in effect, you know, the law. Um, and, you know, we work with our policy committee at the high school. So this is sort of a catch-up, um, administering medicines to students. And what you have before you is, if you go down to the fourth paragraph, what state law has changed here is any medication, um, containing CBD or THC, um, even though it's been legalized, under chapter ninety, controls our drugs that are available, and what they call illegal. So even though chapter ninety changed, it didn't change for y'all. It is still, um, not approved, uh, for the school to administer your THC and CBD-type medications. And I re, um, I wanted to point that out, cause there've been a lot of studies done with epilepsy whereby, um, THC or, kind of, that's been very helpful, but you can't.
Unless it's by prescription? It says unless it's a prescription.
Not even.
It says unless the CBD or THC.
But an employee can't do it.
Oh.
An employee can't do it. So even though it's chapter ninety, so it changed things around, an employee at State Board of Education can, or Board of Education can allow to.
Well, who, who administers it?
It's gonna be a parent by prescription.
Okay. So like a school nurse could not administer that at school. That's not what it says in this.
Are you, where are you?
Well, I'm, I'm over there. Administration through your parents.
Let me read that paragraph, if that's okay. So it's the fourth paragraph, and it says, "The administration, including by parents, school employees, or self-administration of any substance containing CBD or THC at school is prohibited unless a CBD or THC product is available by prescription only and has been approved by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, and all requirements of the policy are met." Is that?
That's the same.
Chapter ninety has legalized certain drugs. That doesn't apply to boards of education. Um, the U.S., well, chapter ninety may have approved it, the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, um, hasn't approved. It's a clarification that while some drugs are no longer illegal, we still have to go by U.S. Food and Drug Administration.
I'm still confused at saying.
We didn't read the whole thing.
It's been by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, and all requirements of this policy are met. Am I? Am I confused, and, or, Mr. Nelson, do you understand?
Well, Jamie asked the question, does that include school nurses?
And it does.
It doesn't say anything about school nurses.
But they said if some were.
It says school. Down to conditions for administering education.
Okay.
Okay. If you look at the whole thing, but just know, the subs, that if you have a parent show up with a prescription of CBD or THC, this policy says that it's not appropriate for a school employee.
Okay, so a school nurse could not do that.
Where does it say?
Uh, go to two E.
From employee must administer.
And we have a number line of school health men, and probably. I'll get this policy to our.
Our school.
Did you read that sign? Did you read that?
Yeah. So two.
Administration.
Is it two E, is that what you're asking? It says the board generally.
No, 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 I'm talking about, uh, number two E. A, A.
Two. Okay, tell me.
One E, one E.
Okay. Proper administration, one E. The employee must administer the medication pursuant to the healthcare practitioner's written instructions provided to the school. A lot of students, parents, and others with professional standards.
Oops. How are y'all breathing now? I think this.
Which, which. There is a prescription, well, that's really.
Do you want a picture?
If there's a prescription, that's what, and that's what I, that's what a school nurse, is a school nurse required to administer it? Or is it illegal for a school nurse, under the current standards, to administer? I guess that's my question.
It says at school it's prohibited unless the CBD, CBD or THC product is available by prescription only and has been approved by the U.S. Food Drug Administration, and all requirements of this policy are met. I would say a school nurse.
It's a.
This policy prohibits CBD and THC substances due to the school system's obligation to create a drug-free environment and the inherent practical difficulty in distinguishing between legal and illegal CBD or THC substances. I will go together for the next meeting.
If, if I was.
This policy prohibits, if a parent wants their epileptic, a child with epilepsy, that you're not gonna prevent it, they have to do it.
What, what you have to understand, though, the way this probably, the way you read this policy, Ms. Davis, is that you can buy, uh, CBD or, and even THC over the counter without a prescription in lots of places, and the parent could administer it themselves, not at school, if they could. But the way Ms. Knott has read that, it says that if there is a prescription, then it is legal, but if it's.
That's what it says, and there may be, and there may be some parents that would go to a doctor, even though it's legal over the counter. You know, as well as I know, sometimes a doctor will prescribe you something that's already over the counter, but they'll prescribe it to you by prescription.
But it says that's to be approved by the Food and Drug Administration, too.
That's true, it does. So this, it, it kind of contradicts itself, does it not?
I'll clarify that because it prohibits.
Yes.
And I feel like the purpose of this probably, in like Ms. Knott, Ms. Walsh was saying, is looking into the future, if, if marijuana is made legal in North Carolina, this is trying to get an umbrella blanket over the school to say it may be legal, but the school is not responsible for, because of the drug-free environment, it's not up to the school. If it's prohibited at the school, then we're not having to try to determine.
Even though chapter ninety has changed.
Yeah.
From down.
Right.
And the render twenty-five. I think, I mean, maybe put more clear.
It needs to be.
Well, maybe not, we can, we can work on that.
This, this. Not clear. I read.
Um, thank you. Uh, uh, wait, I, I have a question. Maybe I was, maybe I was wrong on this. We're supposed to review process of our big graduation question for December, January, for our big graduation for sixteen-year-olds. Are we supposed to do something with that, this, we not supposed to look that up for this team's early graduation?
It had to be adopted.
You adopted this.
We need.
You've already adopted.
For some reason, we need to put a substance on the back burner, and I can't.
No, that's going back burner.
Now, is this first.
There's.
This is first.
Early graduation, a substance on the back burner at this time.
Probably as the process of early graduation.
Now, right with your, the high school had to start in January, meeting with.
We had met with all freshmen and sophomores as a class, explained to them what the twenty-two, twenty-two credit diploma is, and we have, uh, told them, uh, that we would have a meeting with them with our parents in order for them to do this. We have already actually had a couple of parents come in with their students. So they are aware, it is out there, it was public, and we have procedures in place. Although, we'll say, some of the forms that Ms. Davis provided us, there needs to be some changes to second up, so we need to get together on that. Uh, we knew how a guidelines to follow to explain the early graduation.
It just doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, sixteen-year-olds can't go out.
And I'll be honest, we did not, uh, there's not been as much interest in this as what I anticipated there might be, and I hope it continues to be that way.
I do, too. I mean, my grandson's sixteen years old, and he has his OSHA certification, and Mr. Park was there, and he could not go right now and get a job. I mean, construction passes, that I wish he was eighteen. Well, if he already graduated, he still couldn't.
Yeah.
Your school administrator goes over a list. Still, it's required right now.
Yes.
And there's, there's already, it's pending lawsuits.
Good.
So, you don't know, but for right now, it's employees that move the doctors. We also have statute that's. Now, quickly, you mean, you intend to be inclined to involve.
Yeah.
Changes from the general.
Okay. We were ahead on that, you said, the meeting.
Okay. Ms. Knott, did I have a motion to go into closed session?
Pursuant to the provision of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, print C. A., print C. Three, and one fifty-three, three eighteen point eleven, print C. C., I move to Grand County Board of Education, go into closed session, and receive advice from Ms. Ellen Davis, Attorney for Grand County Schools, Board of Education, which, which advice comes within view of the attorney-client privilege. The advice will be general legal advice for legal issues and legal matters. Pursuant to the North Carolina Provisions, to the pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, print C. C., I move that the Grand County Board of Education, go into closed session, for the purpose of considering personnel matters as defined in and allowed by the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, print C. A., print C. Six, and the North Carolina General Statute one fifteen six dash three twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? Clear now, in closed session. Action items, uh, Ms. Knight?
Yes. Um, I'd like to recommend for the elementary teacher positions, Abby Ball and Caitlin Gibson.
Do I have a motion to approve R. S. Teachers Abby Ball and Caitlin Gibson?
I still move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Like to recommend for instructional substitutes, Leanne Ramsey, Dwayne Sellers, and Raven Ratler.
Do I have a motion to approve instructional substitutes, Leanne Ramsey, Dwayne Sellers, and Raven Ratler? So move. Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I'd like to recommend Rowan Gordon as a volunteer.
Do I have a motion to approve as a volunteer, Rowan Gordon?
I still move.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed?
And I'd like to recommend David Lovinggood as a custodian substitute.
Do I have a motion to approve David Lovinggood as a custodian substitute?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Any opposed? Is that all you have, Ms. Knight?
May I ask a question? Who was back in the open session?
Uh, Ms. Tenshaw, and then seconded by Ms. Knott.
Now, you, you got to do something.
I was just, just for the board's information, you asked during a session last meeting to, uh, me or Ms. Klein to share board minutes out, uh, with the staff.
Yes.
And so I just, I want to share that that was shared out the morning after the meeting. And this was kind of the format it went out in, and then I just gave a, just a little short synopsis of what happened in many ways. So that went out to the staff, just as well. And then, um, and then the second page of that, um, it didn't really, uh, it's little, I apologize, but. So on your board, on the website, the Board of Education, underneath where your names are in your board reports, there's now a section with Board of Education Agenda, there's a section on Board of Education Minutes, and it's beside your Board of Education Policies. They all take about two clicks, and three of them has to get on.
Yeah.
And we will try to put a section on there, so we can work out the video. Uh, today's probably didn't get one since those kids had to leave, but once we get that, then we'll start dropping those in a section as well.
You know, even after I made, even after I made that presentation on board policy, I had, I had, I had a call through school to know about some of the board policy, and I'm like, that's on the website. And they didn't, they were a school employee, didn't they?
They have to sign off every year that they, they have, uh, they have had the opportunity to review board policies. That's part of their staff requirement, so they have already signed up on that.
So.
They read it clearly, that is part of their.
That's, then you're saying that it was on the website.
It's on the very end, coming. They have to do that with your other employment, as part of like getting their ID name. And they was, I put it in their user.
That's good. It's big, we can see what's going on.
So.
Ms. Chairman, can I ask a question? If we're gonna have those young kids in there? How do we handle that?
It's a public place, but I, I just will not, I, I don't want, if, when it gets contentious, I don't feel like that's the place that I would put my students, that I don't feel like this behavior, I want to, um.
They don't need to see.
Well, I just don't feel like that is the behavior that we're trying to set a good example, and I do not want them intentionally to have them in here in that, with that one.
And I'm fine with that, and I think if, if we're gonna handle, you wanna say, you just.
It is still rolling. It's still rolling. I mean, it was still rolling, so.
I'm.
We'll try to get it figured out, just in case, either a backup person that could stand up for the championship. I know Ms. Wiggins started off at the end of the session, so we'll, we'll kind of work through that as we get through.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so the only other announcement I have is your next board meeting is scheduled for March fifth, um, twenty-four, and I will be between now and then, uh, work on board training, uh, inquiring with the School Board Association.
Can we say good training? We're required to have at least six hours of training, so we.
Yeah, are we still required to have the six hours of training, Ms. Davis?
They say it's what about, what about, so what about let the, when we do the webinars online? And that, and I, I always click on, and I've done that, does that not count for anything?
You need to check on that. I would hope that they wouldn't give you credit.
Well, I clicked, and I got completed.
Yeah, but you need to check.
I need a call in there. Do I need to bring?
If that's what, um, no, Charlena needs that. When I do board training with y'all, I complete a form.
Okay.
That is proof. So you, so you all need proof, you're making a, probably.
I'll just go back on that and click on that, see, cause I've clicked on it, and I've completed.
Cause, yeah, I mean, it would be nice if it counted, if it should count.
Well, it's supposed to count, but it's supposed to count for our teachers, to not, Ms. Knott.
Did you get an email coming from them? That's what I wanted.
So, so Attorney Dexter, you need to do two hours of training, I mean, so then everybody gets.
Let's see, let's be, let me show you the book I have, um. pulling course to fall back on.
Okay.
And from proceeding, we're talking about proceeding, and then you're gonna check with the School Board Association. So if they're gonna do that.
Well, I mean, they may not be able to come for the May, for the March 5th.
Yeah.
Board meeting. So do we wanna go ahead and schedule two hours of training prior to that meeting, so you're gonna get it regardless of what they choose to do?
Yeah, because we have to have this down by the end of the, this year.
By June 30th.
Yeah.
So shout them out to 30.
Everybody, the whole board has to sit down.
How many hours have we already had? If you.
No.
We hadn't did any.
We usually do that after.
Last year. Are we?
Well, I completed it on the June, and I haven't done it.
We usually do those after the first week.
We do them. Right.
Yeah.
They've done pretty.
Yeah.
They're not spread out. They're not spread out.
Can, can you and Ms. Davis work on something then, for two hours for the next meeting?
Yes.
Something started.
It's.
It's gonna be something.
Ms. Knott, did, did, uh, did, uh, we got that worked out for teachers to get ready, if they watch this video.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? And opposed?